The first item on the agenda is to convene into executive session or recess into executive session pursuant to RIGL 42464 for discussion of any discussion of job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons, provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in writing and advised that they may require the discussion to be held in open meeting pursuant to RIGL 42465A1, such as pertaining to potential litigation and legal advice and collective bargaining pursuant to RIGL 42465A2, potential appeal of NEA NK employee A termination, NKBCA negotiation update, ESP negotiation update. And then item three, discussion of any investigative proceedings regarding allegation of misconduct, either civil or criminal pursuit, RIGL 42465A4. Can I get a motion to go into executive?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Okay, so we will reconvene into open session and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call.
Erin Pearl, here.
Robert Case.
Here.
Jennifer Lima. Megan Riley.
Here.
Sherri Kennedy.
Here.
Christine Maupier. Joshua Bush.
Okay, thank you, and the calendar?
Okay, for our school committee meetings, our next ones, we have three in January, January fourteenth, January twenty-first, and January twenty-eighth, those are all Tuesdays, at seven PM here at Central Office. For our subcommittee meetings, we have a DEI advisory, Wednesday, December eighteenth, five-thirty here at Central Office. A policy advisory, Monday, January sixth, at four-thirty, Central Office. Health and wellness, Wednesday, January eighth, four-thirty, Central Office. CLAC, Wednesday, January eighth, at six-forty-five at Central Office. Budget and finance, Monday, January thirteenth, four-thirty at Central Office. Building advisory, Wednesday, January fifteenth, at four-thirty, Central Office. And our temporary advisory subcommittee on district discipline, Thursday, January sixteenth, four-thirty at Central Office.
Thank you.
Presentations and recognition. Am I correct? So we'll move on to citizens' comments.
Pam Panero, seven-ten Slocum Road. I'm here tonight for a few different topics. First, I wanted to talk about the grading committee. One concern I have and hope the committee can look at is that the percentage of students who are making the honor roll in high school doesn't seem to align with the proficiency that is demonstrated on the standardized tests. For example, in the first quarter, seventy-one percent... For example, in the first quarter, 71% of ninth and 10th graders made the honor roll, which is an 85 or better grade average. As a parent, I worry about grade inflation and these numbers concern me. I worry about whether we are truly preparing students for college if there is grade inflation. Secondly, as many of you know, I am passionate about class rank and I will continue to advocate every time the program in studies comes up. I believe strongly that students in ninth and 10th grade should be allowed access to their class rank if they choose. Most of you have heard me enough on this subject, so I'll leave it at that tonight. Lastly, I'm here to speak about the policy committee agenda item. I have a few concerns about the advisory committees in general. First, I don't believe there is a list anywhere that identifies the members and co-chairs of the subcommittees on the website. If it is there, it's not easily accessible or clear where it is. I was also concerned by the last building subcommittee meeting where the town manager mentioned the concerns about having a school committee member fill in when one member is absent and his concerns for a rolling quorum. This conversation was greatly upsetting and concerning, and this should be made much more clear because if this is the definitive case, then this was broken last year on the building subcommittee, most likely innocently, but now should be spelled out going forward, so it is not repeated. Also, at the building subcommittee meeting, it was made clear that the town manager could no longer be a co-chair based on the policy. This definitely should be looked at as it seems like it would be an asset to the school to have the town manager as co-chair, considering this is a school and town project. I also have specific concerns about the policy subcommittee, which has such an impact on our district and the makeup of this committee is extremely small and limited to four members. I also have been noticing how our policies have been significantly growing in length and depth. Former two-page policies are now several pages long. I hope you will discuss and clarify what should be in a policy and what should be considered procedure or protocol. The policies have grown greatly, more complex, and I'm concerned that they may be dipping into procedure and protocol and people may get lost in the nuances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent report. Dr. Duba?
Thank you. A few items to bring to everyone's attention tonight. I'll start off with district highlights. First, Wickford Middle School participated in another successful turkey trap this year. I want to congratulate Wickford Middle School staff and students for raising $15,000 for the North Kingstown Food Pantry. That's a great accomplishment for them and also such a great way to help their own community. At the high school, with some great news coming out of the music department for the high school as well as Wickford Middle School and DMS. We had many students audition for Rhode Island All-State Ensemble for this upcoming school year. At the high school, there were 53 students who were accepted into the Rhode Island All-State Ensemble. Seven are ranked number one in the state on their instrument and their age category. Junior level is grades seven through nine and senior level is grades 10 through 12. Six are ranked number two, three are ranked number three, and 28 of these students are part of the CET program at the high school. At Wickford Middle School, there are seven students that were accepted and at Davisville Middle School, six students. So that's a great accomplishment for all of our students and I want to thank our music department for the dedication and talent and how they support our students through this process. Thank you. Also, as we all know, school accountability was released today from the Department of Education. The school accountability star ratings are based on the assessments that were completed in the previous year, so that would have been the 2023-24 school year. They were released today at 4:00 PM. An email went out not that long ago from us to all of the staff and the families regarding the recent data. We will present in January to the school committee to provide you an update on the star ratings as well as the areas of focus that we will be needing to look at. But I do want to highlight a few of the schools. North Kingstown High School increased from a two-star to a four-star. So good job to our high school administration, staff, and students for all of that hard work. So thank you very much. Quineset Elementary School increased from two stars to three stars. The same for our Quineset staff and students and families. Excellent work. Stony Lane remains a five-star school and Wickford Middle School remains a four-star school. There are some focus areas at other schools that we will discuss at our next meeting as well. And lastly, I want to recognize Chief, our Fire Chief Scott Cattell, who had last week announced his retirement. So congratulations to Chief Cattell for his 35 years of service to the North Kingstown School, North Kingstown community. For the past eight years, Chief Cattell has led the NK Fire Department. His expertise and wealth of knowledge in public safety will be greatly missed. Over the past year and a half, I have had the privilege to work with the chief as he was a member of our district school safety committee. Over the past year and a half, he has offered his expertise in reviewing our safety plans and enhancing trainings for our school district. Most importantly to note is his dedication in organizing town-wide safety drills that allow us to be better prepared for a crisis. On behalf of the North Kingstown School Department, I want to thank Chief Cattell for his service and wish him well on his retirement. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the superintendent report from the committee? Okay, thank you, Dr. Duba. Assistant Superintendent, report, Mr. Resnade.
Yes, thank you. So starting with the greeting policy, our committee was formed this year. The goal is to create a revised greeting policy for North Kingstown. The focus of our work at this time is on grades six through 12. We have, we have current policy, but it was last revised in 2013. So we formed a committee and consists of district and building administrators, high school and middle school teachers, special educators, MLL teacher, parents from middle school and high school, and also three North Kingstown High School students. To date, we've had three meetings. We've reviewed research. We've discussed the purposes of grading. We've reviewed recently adopted policies from other districts and we've discussed the new challenges and opportunities of artificial intelligence with respect to grading and academic integrity. Next steps are to begin deeper discussions into policy language and how to incorporate best practices while also establishing clear roles and responsibilities for schools, teachers, students, and families. We anticipate bringing a draft policy to the policy subcommittee in the spring. Next item is summer planning. So the goal for our summer planning is to ensure that summer supports remain in place for students who need them. At the elementary level, we're looking to identify students in need of support and provide summer instruction to retain their skills and preparation for the fall. And at the secondary level, to provide students with opportunities to recover course credits and also to learn skills related to organization and time management. We're looking to strengthen connections between various summer programs, including those overseen by the Town Rec Program to meet the needs of students and families. Recently, we sent a survey out to families, which provided us with helpful feedback about what they are looking for, what their needs are, their wants are in terms of summer programs and schedules. And our goal is to offer a variety of options for students, a combination of both academic and recreationally-based activities. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Resnade? Robert just had one about the summer planning update. What's the timeline for that exploration and kind of, because I know obviously people sign up for things for summer as early as January, February.
Yeah, we're looking to align our, well, we're looking to identify students who are in need of the supports and get that done in January. And then we are looking to ensure that we have opportunities extended to families prior to the town's extension of their opportunities, just so they're aware of that beforehand.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any additional questions? Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to routine items. The first item on the agenda is executive session. I will disclose that there were no votes taken in executive session today. Can I get a motion to seal the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the consent agenda, would anyone like to exempt anything from the consent agenda before we vote on it?
Yes, I'd like to exempt D1, D2, and E1.
D1, D2, and E1. Okay. Any others? Just a note, you're welcome to vote on C1 and 2, but I didn't know if anyone wanted to exempt that because those, for the meetings that you weren't already on the school committee?
Yeah.
So C1 and 2, right. And 3 and 4? Is that correct?
Oh, for me?
Yeah, when was, for when your first meetings were?
Right, yeah. So, yep, exactly.
Twenty-five and then the 19th, right?
Right.
So I'm just gonna, I think we abstained last, no, I abstained from when I did some building subs, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but we still have to exempt them from the consent. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so for getting back to the consent, any other ones that we want to pull out? Okay, so just to review will be, the consent agenda will include item B, item D3, and D4.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, C5.
And C5, thank you. All right, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll go back. So for C1, 1 and 2.
Probably have to table those.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. It's like, if they, I mean, Robert's rules-wise, they technically.
Yeah, they're allowed to, they don't have to though.
If your plan is to exempt them, we'll just, because you weren't there, we'll just table it for now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, but can I get a motion to table?
So moved.
1 and 2. Actually, let's do it as a group. Let's do a motion to table 1, 2, 3, and 4. Okay, so moved. Second? Can I get a second for table?
Oh, second.
Yep, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so Joni, we'll just have to put those on the next one. And then I need a motion for, oh, so let's go D1. Can I have a motion for that?
Can I? I'd like to make a motion to approve item D1.
Yep, okay. Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, then we can open up for discussion.
Okay, I just had a couple questions or thoughts on this. The first one is, I noticed that the invoice date is November 24th and that is obviously prior to our being able to vote on this. So I, I'm kind of just asking or just asking that maybe in the future that the date comes after the approval.
Dr. Duba, do you want to give any context on this one?
Yeah, so this is the huddle subscription and it was something that we had noticed that was not on a previous school committee meeting and that's why it's up now. It would have been up there prior if we had that. It was kind of like an automatic rollover from the company that they do for us. So there was no gap in service for it, but you are right, it should have been on the previous agenda and it was something that was missed.
And I only say that because just in the off chance that it doesn't get approved, then you have to figure out where the money's coming from. And thank you for that explanation.
And it wasn't the budget, of the original budget that was approved, but because this is over what is, what we can put forward prior to the school committee approval, it has to come back to the school committee for approval. But it was in the original budget that was approved.
Okay. It was, was this missed, it's an annual subscription, but this isn't the first time we're getting this product, right? So was it not?
It wasn't in there last year.
We didn't do it last, yeah. So, but we did have it.
We had it. This is not something, you know, this is something that we have been using. It is, it was not last year. I think with all the changes of hands that were here, it was something that was not seen. That was put forward to the school committee last year.
Interesting.
And then on the cover sheets for something, an item like this, can we possibly also start to add specifically the UCOA lines that these items are attached to, just so that the public and the school committee can better understand how this is being budgeted and where the money's being pulled from?
Turn to Leslie on that. Thank you.
I just like doing this the whole time.
I'm, no, I'm just gonna go back and answer some of the questions, too, but I didn't want to interject. It's prior. Oh, Leslie and Powell, Director of Finance. So the invoice date is from November. It has not been paid. I held it. So when I saw, and it came through, through the normal channel, because it was a budgeted item, I pulled it, but it was already past the other meeting dates, so we had to wait. So it's actually on hold. We've already talked to the organization. They've continued us, but it has not been put through. So, good news there. And in prior years, it had been paid using different funding sources and it was not fully in our budget, which is why it never came to the school committee, because the amount that the general fund paid was below the $9,000. This is the first year where the full amount is in our budget, so I thought it was best to put it to the committee, just to be on the safe side. So that's, it was budgeted, it was not an extra item. It's the first year that it's been here. I'm just trying to make sure we're following all of our protocol. And then I already forgot what the question was. Oh, UCOA.
The UCOA, yeah.
Yes, that's absolutely certainly something we can do. That's not a problem.
Thank you, that would be helpful. Appreciate it.
Can we clarify why, what is, with the funding change source, why we're now paying all of it out of one source?
So I believe, and I will have to verify this, but it was partially paid by the booster club in the past. And then it was initially when they first got it because of what it was being used for. It was being paid out of student activities. But because it's now being used by coaches, it does not qualify to be paid out of student activities because it has to be for student use only. So in order for us to continue to use it, it has to be paid with our general fund dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then I would say maybe in the future, just put like a memo before it, so then we already knew that, you know, you don't have to question during the meeting.
No, no, I don't mind. That's why I'm here and I will absolutely do that. And I wanted to just make sure that it got on the agenda and that it didn't get carried over for another month, so.
No, it totally makes sense.
We'll absolutely do that next time.
Thank you. Any further questions regarding this?
I have a question about, since we're talking about the cover sheet, and I don't know if this should be brought up at another time, but in addition to the UCOA lines, you know how the cover sheet talks about the flow, like who has seen it, who has reviewed it? Could we also start to add exactly which admin? So for instance, in that case, maybe Leslie's name would be on it, so that we would know if we had any questions, we as school committee members should direct them right to her versus, you know, emailing you about something. Does that make sense? Am I making sense here? So on the cover sheets, we just know, it doesn't just say, you know, Joni's name and then school committee. It says the actual admin who's looked at it.
Like who it's coming from.
Right, who's reviewed it and is putting it either forward for a recommendation or something along those lines.
Okay, any other questions about this one? Okay, hearing them, we'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one that we pulled out, D2, do we have a motion?
I have a motion to discuss.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dr. Duba, do you want to give any context on this one before we start?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna pass that a little bit to Robert because he's.
So, so we put together an RFP submissions. Again, this was for DEI consultant work. The district had budgeted $26,000 in Title II of the CRP for this work. And this was done for the purpose of collaborating with the consulting group around the topic of equity in our schools. The intention was to lead the district in a strategic planning process in addressing areas of need that are identified in the district's equity audit. And so what we did is we put together a, we put together a bid process. It was clear that the four bids that we received for the work were far above the budgeted amount that we had for this. And so in reviewing the bids and also going back to it, the district is going to explore an alternative option. So that money was budgeted before we had brought on our new community engagement, sorry, Equity Blowing and Community Engagement Coordinator. That person is now in place, so knowing we have access to that, to our new position, we're gonna pursue alternative options, including job embedded professional development that are gonna be tailored towards the same goals that we were going for in the consultancy work. But we feel very confident with our new person coming on board that we can move this work forward in a productive way through in-house professional development.
So is this not on for approval?
That's correct.
There was nothing, yeah, there was nothing.
Because it's under consent, so wait, okay. So this is just an update?
Right, so the bids that came through were all hot, so we were not making a recommendation on any of the bids.
I'm so sorry, is there a memo? Is there a memo with this?
So along those lines of the memo and.
Oh, that we go to the end.
This is just for going forward. So the memo was on page 189. And then I do know you sent a separate memo, but if possible, if you could maybe, for instance, your recommendation was you're not gonna go forward with this. So I had started to read the bids, so if you could possibly put that maybe right at the beginning so that then we don't have to go through all the bids in the future. Which I understand, you know, I understand that they, it just closed on December 11th and you had to get the agenda out, but that would just be helpful then.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you for the explanation, then.
My apologies for any confusion.
One thing I did notice when I did read them is, like, the scope that they presented was much higher than I think what we had originally asked for, and so did the companies go above and beyond with their RFP submittals, or did we ask for this level of scope? Like, I felt like they included things that we had already done, like equity audit vibes and things like that, what were your thoughts on that, Rob?
Yeah, they, they went above and beyond.
Yeah.
Um, I, I thought our RFP lined up pretty much with what we wanted, but, but they gave us a little more than, than what we asked for, um, so.
Yeah, traditionally, when that happens to me, like professionally, like I'll go back and ask, like you can see, like, how it's lined up, and then I would just pick and choose, like, what we were interested in, is there a reason that you're, you all don't want to do that approach?
We, we looked at that.
Yeah.
But still, even looking at that approach, we, we still felt that the numbers that they were looking at were above what we were, what was in our range.
Okay.
And I, I'm gonna say, looking at it from what this is, I, I think they were reaching for what they wanted to do, and what they were charging.
I think, you know, like Rob said, like, where, where are we looking at, at that, like, what the need is? And, as he said, we now have someone in the position, we didn't have someone prior, this was also something we looked at last year as well, because we had put the posting out there, we weren't finding someone, um, we were thinking that we can bring in a consultant to help with the professional development, and that was, you know, last year, that was, you know, we're looking at, and over the summer with writing the Title II, we wrote it in there. Like, you know, things have changed, um, we're confident that, looking at, you know, who we have, and really making it more of a job embedded professional development, and really working with school, you know, our schools on what is needed and necessary in moving forward, you know, we can do that work internally, and then we can amend the Title II and look at how we use those funds differently. And not that I say differently, it still could be used to support the work we're doing, but not putting any towards a consultant.
Alright, so you're gonna fail this bid, this RFP, and then we'll get more to come in the future? Is that what's happening?
Right, we're not, we're, we're not putting anything forward, right, the bids came in high, um, we're not gonna go with any of these as a consultant, and we're, I'm giving questions.
So this will come back up? Because I believe we approved, like, this was approved as part of.
This was all in Title II, right, so when we can amend Title II, we'll amend the Title II, and we'll share it, and we'll bring that back to the committee of what, what we're doing.
Thank you.
Rob, not to put you on the spot, but I have a question about how it directly, how directly does it connect to the Vision of a Graduate, since we are, because that was.
I think they were typecast, um, in the RFP.
Oh, in the RFP?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the Vision of a Graduate is in process.
Right.
So we don't, we don't have one finalized yet.
Right.
We're working on it, um, obviously, it does go, like, equity work does align to, you know, what we're working on with Vision of a Graduate, um, so, so, you know, they do line up, um, but, but there were some Vision of a Graduate language in there that probably shouldn't, shouldn't have been in there.
You, you don't have to go any further, I, if that's all it was, that's fine, I just, um, I read a couple of the RFP, you know, um, numbers, items were regarding the Vision of a Graduate, I just wasn't sure how that was possible.
Yeah.
Since we don't have that yet, okay.
Yeah, exactly, it's in process.
I get it, thank you.
Yep.
Yep, I, yep, perfect, alright, any other questions regarding this item, because we don't need to take any action on it today, and I just made a note for future agenda for the amendment for the Title II, what's the timeline for that, do you know?
Um, so, what, I need to see if we can work on it, and now, we may have to wait until January, when they open the amendment. Uh, I don't think we can really approach it.
No, I just, if you really, I remember with, um, like, S R, it was like a very specific timeframe, so this would be after the New Year.
It's usually around January.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, perfect, anything else on this one, share anything, Rob?
Okay, um, hearing none, we'll move on to, did we get everything that was in consent?
No. No, we get, we have to do E.
Yeah. Um, so can I get a motion for E one, please?
Let's make a motion to approve item E.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Dr. Duvva, do you want to give us any context on this, um, and then we can have questions?
Yeah, so, um, based on student needs, we need to increase the, um, FTEs for the APE teacher in order to provide services to, uh, student needs at work for middle school.
Okay, any questions from the committee?
Yeah, I, um, I just had a quick question, and I'm assuming this is gonna be covered, but, uh, there's the eleven thousand plus, um, increase, and I'm assuming we're good on covering that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any additional questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, so that brings us to the end of, the end of consent agenda, uh, we'll move on to special reports, um, we do have some advisory, um, subcommittee reports, um, and so the first one is policy, and I believe, yeah, Mr. Case is going to pull it up, and he would like it to be known for the record that he is reading out his phone because his computer is.
Computer died.
Can I possibly make a motion before the reports? Can I make a motion to move the advisory reports to the end, so we can cover unfinished and new business first? Is that possible? And is that possible going forward?
Um.
I know, I'm really throwing.
No, it's okay, we can, you most certainly can make a motion for today, and then I'd, I'd be happy to talk to Dr. Duvva about the organization in the future, um, so if you make a motion, have a second, have the votes, we can most certainly.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, put the advisory reports at the end of the meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
So, I'll second it.
Great, okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move on to unfinished business, and then we'll circle back to those advisory reports.
Thank you.
Um, so the first item is, item A, do we have a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, um, sorry, Cheryl, just make, so is it like a motion to approve, a motion to?
Oh, I make a motion to approve.
Perfect, thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion, anything, Dr. Duvva, on this one? Get the foam out grant?
Uh, yeah, so, um, we have an update tonight from Trish Colley, so I'd like to call her up, so she can.
Sorry, this is actually not.
My office?
We just need a motion for discussion, this is not, we don't need to approve anything on this business item, correct?
No, no, there's, yeah, there's nothing to approve, this is just an update for.
Just a date.
Yeah. Move your, that's okay, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I listen.
So we just need a motion to discuss, this one, yeah.
I'll make a motion to discuss.
Perfect.
It's like, yeah, it's just listed for possible actions, that we're covered on everything under unfinished business.
Yep. Great. We're, we're, we're ready when you are.
Okay, alright, so Trish will welcome you up, so you can provide us update on where we stand with the get the foam out grant, and the work that you're doing.
Hi, Trish.
Hello.
You're very festive.
I got caught yesterday with Cindy Lou Who and the Grinch in my office, and I was in a grout fit, so I was like, oh no, you're coming out now. So I'm really happy to introduce Eva Tooey, hello, Eva, and we're just so fortunate to have her, she received her master's in Marina Fairs from URI, she holds a bachelor double majoring in biology and music, and Eva has been working in environmental nonprofits for eight years, and she's on board with us to do our composting and recycling, so she's got eight years of experience, and she's so embedded within the green initiatives in Rhode Island, she's just a gem, so, she's gonna take you through this.
Thank you. Alright, we've prepared a presentation just to talk about, um, the program so far, um, and it's called the Student Compost and Recycling Program. We can go to the next slide, okay, so, uh, this is a grant-funded initiative from the Get the Foam Out, which was, uh, grant provided by the Rhode Island Department of Education, um, and so our main goal, starting is to develop a student-driven district-wide sustainability program, um, where we are actively gonna be introducing composting and recycling, um, as well as, uh, share cart into all of the school lunchrooms across the district, um, and it's student-driven, because each school have a compost crew that is, uh, student ambassadors, that are going to be the drivers of, um, making sure that there is no contamination in any of the compost and recycling bins in the lunchroom. Um, and we will have reduced, um, all of the school lunchroom waste by fifty percent, once this program, um, is in full force, and we've actually already have seen, uh, pretty great results, um, from Forest Park Elementary School that is actively participating, um, and I have a graph later that we can show about that. Um, we are going to, uh, transition all of the service ware being used in the lunchrooms to compostable or certified, certified compostable or recyclable materials, to eliminate all of the single-use, um, plastic that we are using to further reduce our landfill waste as a district, um, and we are going to be sort of ground truthing the financial and operational needs of this program to keep it, uh, long-term, once the grant funding, um, runs out. Um, and also, all of the schools will be receiving, uh, share refrigerators, uh, so, if you're not familiar, a share refrigerator is, um, useful for the food that is purchased from the lunchroom, if it's untouched and uneaten, it can go back into the system of the, the operational kitchen system, but then can be used, um, for students to access during the day, if they need snacks, or they forget their snack, or they just are feeling hungry, so, um, we'll be able to, uh, reduce, uh, wasted food, but also help with food insecurity. Alright, we can go to the next slide, um, so going through some of our accomplishments to date, which we have a lot of accomplishments considering, we've just started the program like two months ago, um, so, we are currently working with the Rhode Island Schools Recycling, uh, Club project, they're a nonprofit organization that works with schools throughout the district to roll out, um, lunchroom composting and recycling programs, um, and so they've been actively helping us roll out Forest Park and Stony Lane Elementary School, and they will be helping us through, with the other schools as well, um, but also to really think about the long-term vision, um, and program of all eight schools, but also within, um, the individual schools, um, because even though the program is uniform, each school is a little bit individualized based off of how it's set up. Um, we hired myself as a sustainability specialist, uh, to launch and manage the program, here I am. And we've also, uh, worked on, um, changing the procurement practices, um, so we're, um, and you can speak on this a little bit, but we're working with a new, uh, company called Morale Sales, um, to ser, to supply a lot of the compostable materials, they're a locally-owned, minority-owned business from Cranston, um, and, yeah, so we'll be continuing to work with them and continue that relationship, um, you can go to the next slide. Um, and we're creating, uh, basically an educational program as well, so, uh, there's gonna be branded, well, there already are branded, uh, signed, signs in all of the lunchrooms, um, with the Child and Nutrition Services logo on them, um, as well as creating, uh, PowerPoint presentations that all of the students will be receiving, um, compost crew training, and also informational materials that will be sent home to all of the families, so everyone is aware of what's happening and what changes are going on. Uh, so we officially started at Forest Park on November twelfth, um, and they're doing an awesome job, all of K through fifth grade is participating, um, and Stony Lane has had their compost crew, crew training, and I was actually there this morning and presented to the, to the second through fifth graders about this program that will start on January sixth. Um, okay, you can go to the next slide, so this is just kind, this is an example of what the waste sorting stations look like in the cafeterias, uh, so there's five stations, and it works as an assembly line, um, so it starts with the share cooler, um, which is a lunchbox that, uh, that the students will put their food in, that will then be either brought back to the operation for kitchen services, or, um, will be put into the share refrigerators, uh, we have a liquid bucket, um, so the students empty their milk or juice boxes into the liquid bucket, so they can recycle them. Then we have our landfill station to capture all of our single-use packaging and non-recycle plastic materials, then we have our compost bin, um, and the district is working with Black Earth Compost, that is a commercial compost hauler, um, so, um, which is great, because we can accept all food waste and some paper materials, that's why we're switching to that type of service ware, um, and then the last station is to stack the compostable trays, um, and this is really just so we can maximize the volume of the compost bins, because they take up a lot of volume if they're not, um, stacked properly, um, and so, uh, we can go to the next slide. Uh, so this is, uh, some pictures of the compost crew at Forest Park Elementary School, so at Forest Park, it's, uh, I believe it's all fifth graders, um, and they have taken this on by force, uh, so they have their whole system of where, of, of, they help set up, they guide all of the students through, um, their, when they're, uh, disposing of their waste at the end of the lunch period, they help the custodian clean up, um, so they're super involved, and really, they're like cha, the champions of this program. Um, and so, about, in one week, we divert about sixty-four gallons of compost or food waste, so that's food waste and the compostable trays, which is about a hundred fifty pounds. And, yeah, it was, it's been very, um, inspiring to see the little kindergarteners also participating in this, uh, because it is possible for the little kids to, to be part of this somewhat complicated process. Um, alright, so we can go to the next slide, um, so this is, uh, data from, uh, waste audit that we did after the first day of composting, of introducing this program at Forest Park, so we were able to divert fifty-nine of the seventy-one pounds of, uh, waste that was produced in one, uh, school lunch, lunch day, um, and they have three lunches, or two lunches, um, so we only produced twelve pounds of landfill waste, so previously, all seventy-one pounds would have gone into the landfill, and only twelve pounds went, so that was eighty-two percent of our waste that was diverted, um, and as we recall, we had a goal of reaching fifty percent of lunchroom waste diverted at each of the schools, so I think it's very likely that we'll be able to at least reach that and exceed it. Alright, and then our next slide, so future program work, um, we are actively gonna be launching these programs across the eight schools by the end of the school year, um, some of them might end up being, uh, pilot, more of a pilot program, especially at the high school, since there's more students, um, uh, I think that's all I wanted to say there, um, uh, we are gonna be presenting about this program, um, about the Get the Foam Out Grant, and specifically what North Kingston is doing at the Rhode Island Composting Conference at, uh, Rhode Island College on March eleventh, um, and we are actively tracking all of the waste metric, or waste diversion metrics, um, for each school, so we'll have a pretty thorough understanding of what, um, what our environmental footprint is by the end of the, the school year. Um, and that is it, are there any questions?
Yeah, thank you so much, and welcome, uh, to the district.
Thanks.
Questions from the committee?
For the share refrigerators, who manages the access for the students? Just, I'm just thinking of like food allergies and things like that, they don't just help themselves, do they?
No, they don't help themselves, they're always accompanied with, there's a staff member, and it's the lunchroom staff that's actually there. We, we started out with, um, they recommended we use like a household refrigerator, but we al, we already had a food recovery program kind of casually, we had it going on, so we realized, we actually increased our food waste in the beginning by just putting everything in the share fridge, but quickly, we were like, okay, wait a minute, we just need to have a little bit of everything available for someone, because we're able to, you know, recover a lot of it, say, a yogurt, if someone doesn't open it, or, or a milk carton, things like that. So what we did was, we, we don't have them yet, but we just ordered glass-front tabletop refrigerators, they're like two point seven cubic feet, small, manageable, glass front, so you can see what's actually in there, so, um, because that's a very important part of it, for sure, is just monitoring, um, the share program.
Other questions? Um, one quick question I had, uh, this is amazing, and, uh, my student, my kids are at Forest Park, and, uh, we use, actually, at home, we use that same company for composting, and let me tell you, my first grader and my fourth grader have been yelling at me, because if I misplaced the napkin in the trash and not in the compost, they know now that that is a no-no, so just know that you're having an impact, that is, uh, they're really learning from it and, and understanding it, and so that's amazing, uh, one of my questions was, and I'm sure there's a very good reason for this, but I'm just curious, um, why are we not using, like, forks and knives and things that we would just wash, or trays that we would just wash versus ones that need to go and get compost? Or trays that we would just wash versus ones that need to go and get composted? So I was just curious about the philosophy of that.
It's not really a philo- philosophy, it's more of a facility. You would have to have the automated dish machines in the buildings.
And then we'd have water waste and stuff. Okay, it just curious.
Yeah, there's energy and heat, there's other things. They make low-temperature dish machines, but um just the building itself. It's not, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but Forest Park in particular has very small plumbing pipes. I happen to know that from our three basins, so um that's where we go. There is grant funding for dish machines that may be something we want to do down the line. If we were, because we do need to replace, you know, two dish machines like in the next five years. If we were to go through the grant process, you know, we'd be committing to the trays and the utensils, so.
And again, it was not advocating just curious.
No, no, we'd look at it all, like the pros and cons of it.
And then I just have one other question. Um, with the company, will the schools get compost back? And it was like personal use you do, so would we, so Forest Park will get, or the district itself will get something back?
Yes, yes, they get, they get the compost back.
Very cool.
But the numbers are staggering. I was just like, from day one, I was like, what? And like you said, your children are highlighting practices. I'm highlighting practices myself at home because of it.
Any other questions from the committee?
Uh, no, I just want to make a comment that um I just think it's so great, and it all started from the Forest Park Student Council, and it's just come so far, so it's such a, um, it's very exciting.
Well, I'm so sorry, and one more question about the timeline and and why, and again, I know there's a good reason, but I'm just curious. Like why it it's gonna take us all spring to roll it out? And then particularly with the high school, I know that they've very specifically advocated for this, like a lot of senior projects, a lot of Democracy Day projects. And so curious about why the high schools last um on the list. And again, Eva, I'm sure you have a philosophy on how this is happening and what needs to happen, but I just wanted to understand that better.
Yeah, it's through the re- uh recommendation of the Rhode Island School Recovery Project, their program. They've done over twenty schools. The success rate is not as good at the secondary level. And whereas an elementary school in Rhode Island, the average waste is forty-seven pounds in the lunchroom because we're having to get, and this is all data through the Rhode Island Recovery, forty-seven a year per student. And so once it goes up to the middle school, it goes to about thirty pounds. Because we're having to serve every single component to an elementary child, whereas in a high school, they can offer versus serve. They can take a combination of things, and as long as it meets the reimbursement, they can go through the line. So they waste less the older the child gets.
Makes sense.
So that's why it goes, and to be honest, the Rhode Island Recovery Project is just like the secondary schools have been very challenging for them.
I mean, very optimistically, that our high school would be the model.
I can, sorry. I'm currently rolling this out in another high school, and it's hard to get compliance. Um, there's also a lot more students. The way that the cafeteria functions is different than the elementary schools, where there's just more control. There's also more adult supervision, so um also just thinking about how the program is um structured. It takes us like about three weeks to roll out a program in a school between getting all the stakeholders at each school involved, doing an informational program, training the compost crew, and then we're physically in the lunchrooms for the first week or two to make sure that it's working. So just realistically.
And then circling back to make sure it's still.
That makes sense.
As much as, yeah, I know, it, we're not hitting and running because we know how that does it work.
Here maybe just a recommendation for the high school. When your community service group came to us and presented on all the work they're doing, it's a very large group of students who are looking to do more and do something. This, they might be a good resource to use, so that way it's student, you know, ob- obviously, all this is student run, right? But at the high school, you can also rely on those students more because they're older and let them just kind of go with it. So I think one of, you know, Rob's going to a meeting tomorrow, which then is gonna bring this up to them. That might be a way to promote it more at high school and have them actually doing more of the work, so we're not bored.
Oh, absolutely, and like Davisville Middle School, um, a student wrote to me who wanted to get things going sooner than later, and I met with her, and I said, well, I, you know, we're gonna be able to do a piece of this in January, but we want to be able to, you know, and it's a good learning experience because it's like, who's the adult in the building? Who are the stakeholders? But let's just take a portion of what we're gonna be doing anyway and start doing it at DMS because the interest is there.
And let me guess, it was one of the girls that was at Forest Park? It was. And I think one other thing you didn't mention that I wanted to mention, um, North Kingston is the first school department that is actually gonna have this in all the schools versus, they've been doing different elementary schools throughout the state and other schools, but we're the first to be the whole. You guys do mention that, but yes.
And and that's like, we have monthly, scheduled monthly meetings with the Rhode Island School Recovery Project, which is unique for them, for any district, because we are committed. And that's like when Eva mentioned about when the money runs out. We're already working on the money not running out for next year.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask about that, what happens with the grant funding, but I know Mr. Mazanati wants to say something.
I just want to say one thing real quick, because last year, Dr. Duver and I um went around to all the schools and met with the student councils of each school and um and listened to them and and heard from them. And I can remember clearly going to Forest Park and hearing this idea from students. And and to see where we are now, um, not even a year later, I think. Um, and to know like just a short time ago, this was just like an idea in the minds of young people, and seeing that this has come to this point in this time is is really inspiring. Uh, so it's a credit to to all of you and to to the students and the staff there.
And the presentation with the Forest Park students, when I circled back in September with them, they wanted a fourth choice for the elementary menu, and and they mentioned about vegetarian items. And then I kind of was able to teach them back just how many vegetarian items are already being offered, but we're gonna do, you know, but we are doing more. And now they added, they added a whole nother meal choice this year. And so that's it too, because it just fuels them, like, wow, somebody listens, somebody did this. And uh, so it's great. Believe me, they're keeping us on point.
Oh, we do. Just that, can you just address that last question, Trish, about the grant? And because thinking about budget cycle and stuff, is there anything that the school committee should know about for FY twenty-six?
What I would say is that I would s- that we, I would see, I would like to see somebody in each building, honestly, if stipend or something, to have that person, because people change, people go from building to building. And right now, I know the principal's very involved, and I know the principals are gonna be, you know, carrying it right now, from what I understand. So I would say just having that person is going to save us money in the long run because it's gonna reduce our hauling tremendously. And, you know, it's hard to quantify it right now, but I would say something should be built in to each building, to be totally honest.
Anything else on this? Great, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is um the school budget calendar. Can I get a motion to discuss?
Sumut.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, um, also, Trish and Eva, you know our rule. You do not have to say goodbye. Yep, goodbye, we appreciate you. You're welcome to stay, welcome to stay, but um, okay, so we have the budget calendar attached to the agenda. And so Dr. Duver slash Leslie, if you want to walk us through this?
I'll do it. She's already, she's all the way in the back.
No worries.
Throw her a mic. Um, so this is the calendar for, the budget calendar for the upcoming um fiscal twenty-six budget and process. Obviously, you know, we've already started this um based on, you know, the calendar where we are with everything. Um, we are, um, right now at the point where Leslie is meeting with the uh building administrators to review their budgets. Um, and then her and I will sit down and we'll go through that, and we'll look at it at a, at a district level, what the requests are and needs, and how it's aligned with district goals and for the future. Put that all together to to create that budget presentation for all of you. And then in January, we will start our meetings of reviewing the budget and providing you with all that information. Until it's approved, and then in in March, I'm sorry, February twenty-fourth, it has to be, where is it? I'm looking at the wrong year in here, I apologize.
Eleven?
I'm too far ahead.
You're looking for the approval date or?
No, I'm looking for when we have to get it to the town.
February twenty-fourth.
Thank you, February twenty, oh, it is February twenty-fourth. I was right, that's right, yeah, February twenty-fourth must be submitted to the town. And then we'll go through the hearings with the town as well for their approval. Any questions regarding what's on here? And upcoming meetings?
Questions from the committee?
I have one, but nope, go ahead.
Um, Ken, just one question that I had on this is now that we have the budget advisory group, um, kind of where their meetings fit, like is it worth putting their meetings on this calendar? I predict I missed them, I'm sorry. Just so that, like, as folks are thinking about opportunities to learn more about the budget, et cetera, like, kind of where those will fall in.
Yeah, we can add those on their advisory meetings. We'll add that to the calendar.
Great, just so that way.
Are you talking about the, uh, like on the homepage calendar?
No, I just meant on this, this actual document, like just having when the building advisor, budget advisory committee meetings are, so that if people are interested in the budget, when they're looking at this document, they'll understand the full picture of how it will cycle through.
Okay, and then to, then to that point, Erin, um, I, and I actually sent Dr. Duver an email about this right before the meeting, so he probably hasn't seen it, but um if we could start to add, I know that's a new commi- new advisory committee, um, but just like they have some of the advisory committee um meetings on that homepage, if we could maybe start to add that, you know, just to the. Okay, yep.
Yeah, yeah, so we can just check and make sure all those are up there as well.
Um, any other questions regarding this? A budget season. Okay, thank you so much for putting that together, and we look forward to more information forthcoming. Um, moving on to item C, can we get a motion uh to discuss?
Sumut.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, Dr. Duver, update on stage two submission?
So right now, we are working with Perkins, with the architects, Rouse, and Jacobs on providing feedback and all the comments to the Department of Education. Uh, we've had two meetings with RIDE, with the School Building Authority, over the past month. So that we, we can make sure that we provide all the information to them that is necessary. Uh, one of the things that they um told us uh was that um with what they're looking for as far as information for comments, looking at um what is required within Wickford Middle School as far as building size, capacity, um, the, the, the design of the building. For us to, you know, to look at that, they would like us to to reconsider the size because obviously there's allowable costs of what the reimbursements are. So they're working very closely with us to make sure that we can get the most reimbursement for the building, for the town. So we're working with them on that. Um, they did tell us that they um wanted our submission to come in for February, not December. So we're doing that as well. That's not going to uh create any um big impact on our timeline because we're not starting to do any building until another year from now. So that's not gonna impact the timeline with um Wickford Middle School with the submitter going in February, not December, and then approval in May from the council, because we wouldn't be starting anything major prior to that anyways. We did talk about capital improvement plans because we want to be able to move forward and be be prepared on the capital improvement plans for summertime. So they did give us permission that it's okay to start um addressing some of those and and doing the prep work, you know, with the architecture, as far as what would be needed um for any of the capital improvements that we put fo- we had put forward. For example, the um thinking of what we had said for the following year, you know, looking at the roof, uh, the roof at the high school, security vegetables. And and we also said, okay, let's look at other kind of low-hanging projects that will make a difference. So putting the water bottle for the stations in the schools, we know that's something that's been asked for. So we're looking at, you know, what, what can we do ADA requirements, um, so those types of things for, you know, for the, for the next year. Um, so we're moving ahead on that. Um, we had a building advisory meeting um last week. We looked at, you know, the design, we really tried to get involvement from the committee.
You can do your part.
Yes, I just, it does, but it just kind of goes along with.
That's why I usually was first, but that's okay.
No, it's, it's alright, I'm just putting that in this way, that's all part of the stage two submission. So we're moving forward on, on, on everything, what needs to be in, and it's all due to them by February fifteenth, so.
Questions from the committee?
Can I just add one question? I'm just confused about how having a six-month delay in the approval from RIDE isn't gonna cause a timeline delay. And so is there a possibility that we could get a revised timeline from INGA, like about, like what that will look like now?
We can, yeah, we can do that, but when you look at what we currently have in place of the design work and everything that we're doing, we can still proceed in the same manner.
Yeah, I just don't, as somebody who's gone through this process like professionally, I just don't understand how that, that's possible. Because if we had gotten the approval from RIDE on the plans now, then we would have been able to go out for bid for contractors and different things like that and start that work if we can.
We're not doing any building for another year.
Well, I understand that, but there's so much between now and then, that needs to happen.
Yeah, it's all design work that has to happen within stage three.
Yep. Right, so just if we could get the revised timeline, that would, that would help me understand better, I guess. Other questions? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Very exciting. The uh, move on to policies, um, so can I get a motion for, so so, because Jen's not here, I'll explain this. So we have a couple that are first read, a couple that are second read, um, and then some recommendations for deletion based on um the previous ones. And so we'll start with the first read, um, so can we get a motion to discuss?
A motion to discuss.
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay, so you all have that information, questions or comments on KBLEA?
I have one thing that's not actually a, that, there's an E in there that there's not, no words to it. So I think it was just a mistake that I wasn't taking it.
Cool, what page and we can get that?
Uh, page two fifteen. Yeah, I don't. I think the five and six go under D.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll.
I did email Jan about it.
Alright, perfect. We'll make sure before that comes back, um, floating E is how I will note it. I'm kind of a hell's to write that, it's just a random, so either like the content's supposed to be with it, or it's just supposed to be with it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, right.
Yep, no worries, that's a good catch.
I like the floating, I was like, take out E.
Any other questions or comments on this?
Yes, I have a question on the same page, page two fifteen, paragraph six. Um, it says in the first sentence that the district, through the Title I staff, will conduct an annual evaluation of the district and school parent guardian and family engagement policies. So the first question is, I'm not sure if you, if that was meant to say that there would be an annual evaluation of the policies or the actual engagement, um, the practices, the activities that are going on. And uh, either way, it looks like that was to be conducted in the winter and therefore, or done in the spring. So is that policy that something, um, is that uh something that can be provided to the committee, the findings? Where can we read about what that evaluation was?
Yeah, so let's take those two separate. So Mr. Mazanati, do you want to explain that one? Because I remember um when we talked about it, policy, there's some, I think that language is confusing because of the RIDE language. Do you know what I'm talking about? So if you want to explain that a little bit?
So there's um, yeah, there's, there's, there's language here from, that's governed by or or kind of stems from RIDE language. And and that's kind of like what the, where that's coming from there. As far as the evaluation piece is concerned, that's something I do in, in partnership with uh, with, with our um Title I coordinator. So we can provide the findings of those when we, when we perform that. But as far as the language is concerned, I think that's where it comes from, is that we draw it from language that we've gotten from, from RIDE on that. And uh, it does read a little bit confusing, you know?
So for clarification, your evaluation, is it of the actual engagement activities versus, it's not, you're not evaluating a policy?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And um, then the second thing about this policy is that um it's, in our case, we only have one Title I school. But um, just maybe going forward, we should take out the language of the actual school being listed and being very specific, and just in general, maybe talk about um any school that's receiving federal grants, uh, any school that's a Title I school versus actually naming it Q U S, you know?
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, I think I raised that same.
Yeah, I defer that to Dr. Duver. Because you, you had advocated, we had advocated to keep it in, right, at some point?
Yeah, I had raised the same thing about removing the names, and then it went back from, I'm trying to remember why it was said to keep it in.
Your staff, your team, it, there was a reason. Your staff, your team, it, there was a reason.
There was a reason, I think, because we had the one, wanted parents to.
They wanted the parents, the families to know where the family center is located, if they ever read it, and this policy is also used as part of the school policy too.
Thank you.
That's, that was the reasoning why.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I don't, I agree with you, Megan, on it, and I think Dr. Duvva had raised it originally as well, and so I don't know if there is a compromise on that, because I, I, as things could evolve, right, Title I gets dictated by lots of different factors, like we would have to come and amend this process, so I wonder if maybe Andrew, you could look at it with Dr. Duvva to see if there's maybe a middle ground there?
Yeah.
I think this policy has to get looked at every year, though, through Title I, with the requirements of the CRP.
It has not been revised since 2017.
Yeah, I know, but I think we're.
Yeah, which is fine, and we can update it at any point, but I do think making things ever, trying to make things evergreen, it makes more sense, and I also, I also think it's unique to reference just one school when it's a classification, but I also understood the rationale from the staff when we talked about it at the policy level, so.
Okay.
You can have, Andrew, do you mind taking a look at that?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do you want me to read comments from the chair that she sent, submitted to?
Yes, Andrew, is that permissible?
I'm sorry.
From the, was it her report, or was it comments about this?
Well, yeah, it's just comments about each policy, she sent comments about each policy.
To be done on the policy.
Just comments, yeah.
That was probably going to be read, I'm assuming, during the policy report.
Yes, well, right here.
She usually will make a motion, and then in discussion, she'll explain the thing, so is that admissible or no?
Yeah, you can read them.
Okay. So why don't you, just, just for right now, KBL-E-A.
Yep, KBL-E-A. So it just says, this first read with revisions of an existing policy that has been revised to reflect inclusive language and to update some policies and programs that are no longer in existence. There are some larger changes to this policy that still need to be made in order to make this policy more family-friendly, so once these revisions are approved, it will go back to the policy committee, we will see this policy one more time before voting on it. I don't know why there are two different names, but they are the companion policies.
Okay. Fun. Any, okay, so that, does that have any other discussion regarding that? Okay, so the notes that I have, we'll check the floating E, just trying to see, we'll look at like the Quineset thing and see if we can come up with a good, like a solution compromise on that, because I think that's been brought up at a couple different levels.
Could you put it somewhere in the policy, like stating, like currently our Title I school is, and that, in one section, and then you could use, you know, Title I throughout?
Yeah, so we, yeah, that's a good suggestion, but also I think we just want to make sure to, to circle back with the Title I coordinator too, because I believe it was her advocacy that Quineset ended up staying in there, and so we do have it on tape too, we could always check as well, so we'll, we'll figure out something, but it's a very valid point, Megan, and then Sherri, your.
It would kind of maybe be a compromise, because it would still be in there, just not throughout, you know, each time Title I school is mentioned.
Perfect, okay, so we'll see this one again, we have the notes, and then we'll make some revisions, and then it will come back to the school committee at our next meeting. So moving on to JE, can we get a motion for that one, please?
I'll make a motion to discuss.
You can do approve if you want.
Oh, I'll make.
Oh, just to, just to clarify too, for the new committee members, just because you make a motion to approve, it does not mean that you then have to, after discussion, et cetera, you don't have to vote in affirmative, like you can, it's okay to make a motion to approve even if you're not a hundred percent confident in the way that you'll vote on something, just.
Okay. I'll make a motion to.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll have discussion on this one, do you want to read, Ms. Limas?
Can I say, there's one more?
Oh yeah, we'll get it in a second, let's just have Jen's comments on this one, she usually, like, we'll do that, it'll give some context, and then we'll go to that.
It says, the second read with the revisions, it's discussed at the November nineteenth meeting, at this time I'm recommending approval.
Thank you, and then Sherri, did you find something?
So, page 219, there's, it sounds crazy, but there's like a dash where I think there shouldn't be one. It's after, it's after like the attendance policy. I'm happy you got right with that.
On page what?
219.
219?
Under one section.
It's, hey, you can take a second.
Oh, all right. See where it says, excused tardies, it's after the third line, family emergencies slash events, and see there's a little dash, I don't think there was supposed to be a dash there.
Okay, I feel like that one, Andrew, would fall in the like typo land?
Yeah, it definitely looks like a typo, it looks like someone was just typing fast.
It's weird.
That would be maybe.
Like, I don't even know what that, like, you know what I mean? It just, I see, I see it, we can fix it, we can.
No, it's like my, like, it's not consistent with the one about.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, we can move that, or move that after events. Okay, any other comments on this one, because this one is a second read, so this is one that we would be voting on this evening.
Yeah, I'd like to possibly hold up on this, because I'd like to look at page 222, paragraph F, what you all added and read, the last sentence, schools will not provide work to students in advance of a family vacation. If I could get some context on that, because as a parent who actually proactively asks teachers when we are going on vacation to provide the work for students, I also feel like, in a way, you know, the parents are the ones making the decisions about going on vacation, so it's a little bit, to me, punishment for the decisions that made, that are made by a parent, if, if schoolwork is not being provided, if it's kind of, in a sense, being withheld, that's not, to me, something that.
I can jump in there.
Thanks.
So basically that's in there, because not knowing when a family may be going on vacation, or how long they're going on vacation, the teacher may not actually have the plans for that week or two weeks out, and the work ready to be provided, so that's why.
So, that's okay, that's perfectly fine, but the way I'm reading it, it's very definitive, schools will not provide work to students.
I wonder if there's a compromise where it could say, like.
Right, not required.
Yeah, like so that it allows them to, so that they're not in violation of it.
Yeah, they're not required to, but if they find, that's a lesson.
That's perfectly fine, the compromise is fine, it's just, that was very definitive.
Can I continue?
Yeah, of course.
I think we want to be careful, because we also don't want to have to put a teacher up against a family, because I'm going to put this out there, people might not like it. We're in school for a reason, and if someone is choosing to take their child out, you're going against what the requirement is in the attendance, and child should be in school during school time, and they should be in the classroom, and it shouldn't fall on the teacher to now have to provide the work for, or try to plan ahead to get that work to them before, when they're required to be in school, and that's, that's the law.
Yeah, no, that's a very, that's a very fair point.
And I know.
So you're comfortable with the language as being will not?
The way it is, I think then we're going to be putting our teachers up against families when they're being asked for work, when they're being pulled to go on vacation, when they should be in school.
Okay, so in that case, but, but you're saying, like, let's say you have a good relationship with the teacher, and the teacher, you know, is, you, you have a conversation, and you're like, really had to do this, or take them out a day early or something, you know, I mean, I know it's.
No, but I think we're putting the teacher in a tough position as well.
I know, and I'm probably one of those, like, parents, who makes my kids do homework on vacation, so that's annoying.
It's okay.
Not that I ever take vacations anyway, so.
Okay, so, we have the current language, which is, school, schools will not provide work to students in advance of a family vacation, we obviously have heard the rationale for, for amending that language, we've heard the administration's recommendation to keep it as is, thoughts on how to proceed, because we do, like this, we're going to vote on whether or not to adopt this policy, is it, so we do have the ability, though, here, to amend or change whatever we want, depending on, on the school committee's thoughts, and then the way that that works, just, just with the new committee members, is that you would make an amendment to the language, we would then vote on that amendment, and then you could vote affirmative or not affirmative, you could vote for or against that, then, however that goes, then we would vote on the whole policy, so we would take it in two different sections.
I'm okay with Dr. Duvva's recommendation, I think that, you know, something I hadn't thought about, which is why we talk about things.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah, no, a hundred percent.
I just want to be careful with the language and how it could then affect people.
No, that's, that's fine.
I think too, though, that, you know, the way that it is written, if, if schools do provide work to students in advance, they're in violation of this policy, so I just want to make sure that you're comfortable and confident with that.
Well, I think also where this is a big push for the state as a whole, especially this year, where they've launched this initiative to have.
Does it tend to, does it tend to?
Yeah, attendance matters, that, you know.
As the big calendar, my.
I mean, yeah, we got the mag, the magnets to go on the refrigerator and all of that stuff, I mean, I think it's very important, so, you know.
Yeah, I do want to say too, though, that this is not, this is not permitting students not being able to make up work, though, like they are able to provide it, no, I think that's important, though, because they are, and vacation's used, and we're thinking, I think sometimes people think vacation as fun, and sometimes there's other reasons that families may have to not be in school and whatnot, but, so schoolwork would be provided upon the student's return, and they would be able to have that, that learning recovery, so I think that's an important designation of.
Do the work after and make, make better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, any other comments on this one? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor of approving JE?
JE.
JE, please say aye.
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 Hey, did you get that, Joni? Yeah, perfect, so then moving on to JIC. Can I get a motion for that one, please?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Rob, do you have any notes from Ms. Limas?
Yes, fiscal restraints, this was approved at the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four meeting, but the policy name was incorrectly listed on the agenda as JICD, so putting this back on the agenda, just to clarify, recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that, or the policy in general?
I know, I have one typo thing.
Okay.
On page 225, at the end, there should be a space between B and C, just to be consistent.
Sorry, can you be a little more specific for me, Sherri?
So are you on page 225?
Yep.
So you can just see on the end of consent of advanced training?
Oh, the, between B and C.
Yeah, like all the other ones have like a space, so I think it can read easier.
Yep, all right, can we, instead of, is that one okay, just as from a typo standpoint, just to prove it?
Yeah, that's.
That's, I said, sure, B and C, okay? Any other notes on this one? Okay, I noted it, Ken, I can make.
Okay.
So do you just need a motion to approve?
We actually already have a motion to approve, or just in discussion, so if there's any other discussion. Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, and then we have two recommendations for deletion, does anyone want to make a motion maybe to combine those two, because it's for the same purpose? I mean a motion, but I'm recommending that we could take them together, is what I'm saying.
I'll make a motion to recommend deletion for four and five, JE, policy JER and JICDR.
One second. Thank you, discussion, any notes from Ms. Limas?
Yes, JER, attendance with the approval of policy JE, this policy is no longer needed, so it is being recommended for deletion. For JICDR, this was approved for deletion at the October twenty-second, twenty-four meeting, but due to the issue with the policy name, we have to put this back on to clarify as well, I don't know why the two policies have different names, but I'm recommending deletion.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hey, thank you, so now we'll move on to new business, the first item on the agenda for new business is program studies, can I get, is this information only today, or do you?
No, this is going to be for approval.
Yep.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so can I get a motion for A?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, one second.
Second.
Okay, and then we'll turn it over to the administration.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I apologize, you have to listen to my voice, it's not pleasing right now, but I'll do my best, so I put together this presentation, outlined the, the items that kind of changed the nature of the program of studies, I outlined every single specific edit in the cheat sheet that I think you guys were provided in advance, that will also outline any grammatical changes, but they didn't, I didn't outline in this presentation what did not change the nature of the document itself, but I'm happy to discuss anything that's in there. So general changes first. Cannot see. Okay, so the first general change that we made was making sure to reflect the change in name for Director of People Services is now Director of Student Services, and we also updated the correct location, it was previously Romano Way, and now it's Davisville Academy. Athletic and co-curricular eligibility, nothing changed here, we just wanted to make it clearer, because we had some questions from the community about what was and wasn't considered eligible. Designated elective, so in accordance with the RIDE regulations updating specifically for math, technology, computer science, and financial literacy for the class of 2028 and beyond, some of those changes are pretty unique to that class specifically, so rather than having several different clunky tables, we just organized the tables there to make it easier to read, and so for our class of 2028 and beyond, they have to have four core math classes, one every year, taught by a certified math teacher, their technology requirement is being replaced by a computer science requirement, and they still have the same financial literacy requirement, so the table was just adjusted to reflect those things accordingly. Success Academy had previously been a level similar to college prep, or honors, or advanced placement, after we did a deep data dive, we found that students who were enrolled in our Success Academy program were by default ending up in a situation where the class was primarily made up of students with IEPs, and that wasn't quite reflected when talking with the families about where their placement was, and so rather than having it as a level, we worked together as a team with central office admin, Rachel Santa and Kendra, and our special ed department to make it a formalized program, so our students could get the individualized support that they needed in a more direct setting through the day, so now throughout the document, there's no longer an option for a student to opt into a Success Academy level, but instead that's a decision that the entire family would make for the student to be in a specialized program, that's one step kind of above alternate assessment, but struggling to access the college preparatory level. All course network, there was just verbiage change to make that a little bit more clear, we added verbiage for the ad drop period specifically for advanced placement, so the ad drop period is typically for classes eight days after the start of school, but when speaking with our AP teachers, there's elements of advanced placement courses that make it a little bit more challenging to make that determination in eight days, and that's because of our day one, day two scheduling, you only really see those students four times, and that first time is usually a meet and greet, so by the time those eight days go by, they did not really feel like they had enough time to get to know the students, and for the students to quite understand how they can be supported in the AP level, so we pushed that to a ten-day ad drop period, and we conferred with the teachers to make that decision, and we also added that we would, we would ask for students who are thinking they want to drop, drop the AP level course to first consult with the teacher and myself and their school counselor, to see if there's a wraparound support plan we can provide for them first, rather than jumping out of it when they see maybe the rigor or the amount of work once they get into the course, so that was reflected in there. We also outlined our override process, so this is not new to our internal process, but it is new to the program of studies, we get a lot of questions about how a student can basically challenge the recommendation made to them to go into the course next year that their, their teacher may feel is most appropriate to them, and that process has to do with basically filling out a form, they work with their school counselor, and then that gets sent to me, and I review other data points and discuss with the family and the student, and we make a decision together as a team as to how, how that schedule will reflect their request to override into a higher level course, so we just outlined that process there on, on page twenty-five of the program of studies, just to make sure that that was very clear. We also added grading periods and weights, so again, this is not a change, just something that we wanted to add for clarity, so that parents and students understood that summative assessments and summative grades are worth seventy-five percent of their quarterly averages, and formative assessments and grades are worth twenty-five percent of their quarterly averages, so we just made sure that that was clear, and we added a little element to our individualized learning plan, so this is something that our school counselors do, they, they move students through their ILP from grades nine through twelve, which prepares them for their post-secondary plans, whatever that might be for the student, but to provide a little bit more incentive and really get some buy-in from the kids, we now added that they can receive point two five credits a year. we now added that they can receive 0.25 credits a year for finishing the elements that they'll work on through the ILP process, which is, for example, building a resume or writing a cover letter or whatever else might prepare them for that next step. And our hope is that after the four years, they receive one full credit for their participation in that and that they feel that much more prepared moving forward. I know that was a kind of quick overview of some of the major changes. Does anybody have any questions about those elements? Yes?
I just have a quick question, which you may not be able to answer, and that's fine.
Sure.
The AP drop period, literally the drop period is easy, I mean, it's easier to drop. I know that with some AP courses and perhaps all of them now, you have to do some summer work.
Yes.
Prior to, so in terms of helping the students catch up if they add on, do you got, what is your support for the students?
Yeah, and that's a very common thing that happens. So if a student wants to kind of override or jump into the course after they've missed the summer work, we usually work with the teacher, the school counselor, the student and the family to explain, here's what was expected of you. Here's a timeline ahead that's reasonable for you to catch up with the work. In some courses, a lot of that summer work was to prepare them for, you know, day one. In others, it was supplemental to prepare them for the rigor. So it really is course dependent. We haven't ever, in my experience here, turned a student away because they didn't complete the summer work. We did wrap around and establish a plan with them. So it is individualized, but it always includes the teacher and the student and their family so that we can make sure they understand the purpose of it. And in my experience, students have done that pretty successfully.
Okay, but there is some, a support system in place here, not just kind of like, sorry, guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, I had a similar question on that one, as far as like the, the conversations that happened about the ad part, like the drop part extension makes sense to me, but I was curious if you all had worked through the ad part as far as like having them miss additional AP courses, like, like class time, for example. You're extending that, that way too, right, if they're coming up?
Yes, yep, yep. So if I understand your question correctly, they have that same timeframe to have those discussions with their school counselor. And that's when we would kind of set up a meeting like I just referred to. And we would, you know, speak through the purpose of the summer work for that particular course because it does change from course to course and how that prepares them and what timeline would be appropriate and whatnot.
Oh, sorry, just to clarify, I wasn't talking about the summer work. I was talking about you're changing it from eight days to 10 days.
For both.
For both. And so like I was curious if you were worried about the missing additional classes of the AP.
Oh, oh.
You know what I mean?
Um, yes. So I would say that.
Like, I totally understand the rationale for drop, but I was just curious if you were concerned about the other side?
Yeah, I would say we're not, not concerned. We always have a waitlist, for example, of students that are waiting to get into it. So a lot of those adding to their schedules are students who may have already been kind of in line for it, may have already done some of the prep work, for example. So our students on the waitlist, they'll still fill out their contract, they'll still get the summer work and work on it. Most of our students who are adding an AP course in the beginning of the year during that timeframe may have come from that. Students who were not in that situation, we would work with the teacher in question. But certainly I can understand that that's, and any course that they're jumping into a little bit late can, can pose challenges.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding what we've heard so far?
Just one other question, sorry.
Oh, yeah, 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 please.
I was trying to like not just talk, so then, give me a second.
Sure.
For the athletic and the co-curricular eligibility, I know you said that we were making the verbiage more clear. I assume that we just, because our fail is different than a lot of other secondary schools in the state as far as like what that threshold is, like it just, it is what it is, right?
Correct. Yep, our threshold is higher than state, uh, schools that have a 65 or a 60 as they're failing.
Yep.
Failing courses, yes.
So are, but they still have to meet our eligibility for fail.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anything else on that section? Okay, this is really exciting for me, this next part. So one item that kind of pushed this initiative is that for a CTE program to become a CTE program moving forward, one of the criteria that they prefer is to see that it started first as a pathway. So it's kind of like CTE with training wheels and that would mean we were doing it internally with our NKHS students first. And if we find success and the, the program shows that it's thriving, we then put the application through for a formal CTE pathway and that's when we can pull students from other districts. So in accordance with this, we had sent out several surveys last year to both our middle schools as well as our high school to get a sense of what the students wanted and what they felt they wished they saw in the school. And so first we asked if they wanted more information or if they felt, how they felt about the programs that we already offer. And we got a lot of great feedback about that. And then we had outlined some pathways that we were thinking about initiating based on our need for wanting to bolster our career readiness, just as much as we are already really great at college readiness. And the students chose, chose the pathways in question with resounding feedback and then added in the open, open question, a lot of really interesting things for us to think about. So two of these pathways had come from that particular form. The culinary pathway and the education pathway, we had resounding feedback from middle school and high school students that they would really like to see those come to the high school. The culinary pathway will prepare students who are interested in going into the food services industry. They'll leave with certifications in the industry, so that when they step out of the district, they have certifications in which they can start in the, in the, in that industry rather quickly out of school. And their work-based learning will be both on campus and off of campus. So in, you know, their senior year, for example, if they follow this pathway, they'll be doing a lot of integrative work to get their hands-on learning relative to that pathway. The education pathway was also a resounding feedback. This is a very exciting pathway in which they will become teacher, teacher assistants by the end of it. So they'll leave with that certification and they can begin right after leaving high school in that career. So it prepares them for that. Or if they want to go to college with an emphasis on education, it also kind of prepares them in advance for that. The digital design pathway was more of an internal conversation specifically with our artistic kiddos, where they, you know, are students who might be tracked to go to a school such as RISD or some kind of visual arts school. And currently, we had already had embedded a pathway in the digital design realm. So the idea is that they would take Art I, digital design, and then advanced digital design. And then their 80 hours would be accomplished through, you know, liaisons within the school, outside of the school, whether they're doing marketing ads or working, working with partners to bring things to life through their digital design work. But ultimately, the idea is for art to kind of be a three-pronged pathway where it can be 2D art, where they're drawing or painting. It could be digital or later we'll talk about a textile type of pathway. But that's kind of down the line. So these were the three that we were able to kind of get off the ground running next year. The other that we received resounding feedback about, but we're still in the phases of figuring out what that will formally look like before we put it in the program of studies is a criminal justice pathway. So we did include last year, which was really wonderful, a criminal justice class to see how that would go. And immediately, 50 kids signed up for it and they're doing really well and they love it. And we already have law and forensic science, which would complete that kind of three, three academic course requirement. What we're still working through is what their 80 hours would look like. So I think that that will be formally in next year's program of studies, but our students are giving us a lot of great feedback on those. Does anybody have questions about these three proposed pathways?
One, one question, just to clarify the timeline. So all three of these do not exist currently and will start next year?
Yes.
Okay.
And the culinary path, well, I'm sorry, the digital design pathway does not require any additional courses. They're already present in our program of studies. We're just organizing the work-based learning piece of it. The culinary pathway, which we'll talk about in a little bit, we are introducing a course. And if that course gets approved, this pathway will also be ready to roll. The one that we are introducing, three brand-new courses that we piloted this year, is the education pathway, which we'll get to when we get to the course proposals.
And for budget impact, Dr. Duba, like, I imagine if these are approved, then that will get rolled in.
Yeah, we've already had conversations at the school level, looking at the staffing and all.
Yep.
And if that will or will not impact it, we're currently using current teachers right now for some of these classes.
Awesome. Anything else about pathways? Great. And like I said, if, if and when these are successful, we'll add, we'll add those components to our CTE pathway applications. And hopefully we can generate some kiddos from our district. These are just some general updates to the CTE programs that we already have. So our Academy of Engineering and Robotics, there were updates to the requirements and core sequencing. So we'll address this in a little bit, but we did add a course to this particular CTE pathway. And for that reason, there are now four required PLTW project lead the way courses rather than three. And the reason is because our faculty was having a difficult time finding meaningful work-based learning opportunities and internships in the community, specifically in the engineering and robotics profession. And so what we did was we added a course in which the course itself will fulfill those 80 hours and they'll be doing a lot of, similar to our teamship program where they're doing those partnerships and project work in the classroom so we can make sure they're actually achieving the requirements. And then for our Academy of Information Tech and Computer Science, as well as our Academy of Music and Music Education, we just designated within the program of studies which courses they'll receive college credit for in our concurrent enrollment. That's not a change, it was just a designation, so that, that was clearer. And then the Machinist Manufacturing Defense, that was approved last year as a formal CTE pathway, which is fantastic. Our kids are doing great and we're continuing to have conversations on how to bring that closer to home. Right now, they're between here and CCRI. But all we did there was make the verbiage and the layout look similar to the other pathways because last year it looked a little bit different, just because it wasn't as formalized. So nothing has changed about the program, we just made it look nice. Does anybody have any questions about those four additions? Awesome. Okay, some general name and credit changes. So Engineering Graphics previously was Engineering Graphics Honors and we changed it to College Prep. This was based on conversations between the, the teachers of the course as well as administration to make it a course that feels and, that feels more accessible to all students. The honors level was feeling a little bit too challenging for some of our students or maybe was a deterrent for them signing up for it. So rather than just having emerging, I'm sorry, Engineering Graphics Honors as a, as an independent course, they're changing it to College Prep and our students who are a little bit more advanced within the course, they'll scaffold that internally. But we want to make sure all students feel welcome in that level course, whether they have a history of taking College Prep or honors courses. Art I previously was Art I of Art and Design, it's now just called Art I. Success Academy, like I referred to, is no longer a level, but now an alternative program. It's housed in the Special Education Department of the Program of Studies. Transition Academy, it was Sale, Skipper, Skipper Academy for Individualized Learning. It's now been changed to Skipper Academy for Independent Living. And German II, we added a dual enrollment eligibility component of that course. So last year, we added dual enrollment with URI where students would get three credits for taking German I. This is just the next sequence in that. So now our students who are currently in German I receiving three credits, they'll now, as we follow the curriculum, bubble over and receive the same for German II. And then we're going to continue to do that until all four of our German courses offer three credits at URI. So theoretically, our students will be able to receive 12 credits with URI that are transferable by the time they take those, those four courses. Does anybody have questions about these items?
I have a question about the, the first one. When you say that these updates have been made, are you talking about, had they been made at the start of the academic year? Or are they, are you, have you made these updates like kind of now?
We've, we've been talking about the updates that need to happen as we move into next year. So the, yeah, the current classes as it was outlined in last year's program of studies.
Okay, so the students who, you know, entered that first course, assuming it was honors, it's not, that's not going to affect them at all going from an honors.
No, right, not this year.
Going forward, yes, but then they'll have the opportunity to choose.
Right.
Whether to take the course or not.
Oh, right, right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else about these items? All right. New course proposals. So our first one I was referring to in our Engineering CTE program. So Engineering Design and Development Capstone Course, again, this is just to ensure the successful completion of that pathway and give them an opportunity to get those 80 hours work-based learning during the school day. So pretty straightforward and that will round us out to four PLTW project lead the way courses rather than three, which it had previously outlined. The second introduct, uh, second course is Introduction to Computing and Data Science. So this is a one semester course that will fulfill the Computer Science Graduation and State Requirement and also provides college credit, which is really wonderful. So Mr. Powell, Mr. Gormley, Chevalli and myself, and Ms. Finkelstein and myself had been working on trying to determine how we can ensure that all of our students in 2028 and beyond were going to achieve the Computer Science requirement. And right now, there's much within our tech requirement or our technology offerings that still fulfill the standards that bridge that gap. So our students who are taking courses that previously were, previously were fulfilling the technology requirement are now also fulfilling the Computer Science requirement. But we wanted to hone in on that even further. And so this course was actually put out there by RIDE, approved by RIDE as a course that fulfills all of the standards that they're looking for, for that requirement. And also will give all of our students college credit coming out of school. So this will kind of provide a dual opportunity and that curriculum has already been provided to us. So what we were hoping to do is kind of phase this in. This course will take some training. Some of our teachers are already trained to teach it. A couple of them would have to get trained to teach it. But because we are currently still fulfilling what we need to and staying within the regulations, we're going to phase this in and eventually this will be the Computer Science Required Course, unless a student might be taking like an AP Computer Science or something like that. And then the third one there is Culinary III. So this is that third level culinary course that we talked about that would round out the culinary pathway. And this is where they would learn advanced cooking techniques. And they would also go out into the community or within the school to fulfill those 80 hours of work-based learning. And that would be offered to 11th and 12th graders. Any questions on these three courses? At the top there is that Textile and Design Studio Course that we were chatting about because our students in the art world had been, there was high demand for some kind of textile hands-on experience. We already do a really great job with ceramics and digital and 2D art, but this was an extension that they had been asking for. We had had items from our Home Ec programming previously. And so we're looking to kind of refurbish some of those items and bring others through the next budget and launch this course. We have a lot of interest in the textile piece and if this kind of builds, we will, that will be hopefully another prong off of that art pathway. So to give you perspective, AP art, so when we look at kind of the long-term goal for AP, for art specifically, AP art is a three-pronged course where the kids can take, they can take a 2D element, they can take a digital element and they can take a ceramics essentially element. And so the idea is to have like a three-pronged pathway to that AP course in their senior year. And no matter which direction they choose, they can still access that final kind of capstone piece and then move forward with whatever specific specialty they have. So that would be offered to grades nine through 12 and it would be a semester course. The next two I'm actually going to talk about together. So our, when the RIDE requirements changed, they kind of tasked LEAs to reimagine our math pathways. So previously, we had been able to allow students credit for a math course with math-related, math-related courses such as chemistry or personal finance or accounting. They would fulfill their final math requirement. But since the 2028 regulations have gone through, that's changed and we can no longer use those as math courses that would fulfill their graduation or state requirements. And so we have been kind of preemptively thinking, what's that going to look like for our current freshmen when they get to senior year? And also, what's that going to look like for our students who may not be able to as easily access the designated pathway? So the pathway that is proposed for, for the majority of students is Algebra I, Geometry and Algebra II and then a higher-level course in their senior year, whether that be pre-calculus, calculus, stats. Those things are kind of already there. But for our students who might not be able to access Algebra II as easily, we needed to make sure that we had a plan for them that we would propose with the whole family as part of the discussion to make sure they had all of their four years of math achieved. So math modeling would be in place of Algebra II and technical math would be in place of their senior math class. And both of those courses essentially set up a student who might be more geared towards a career path. So if they, we worked actually very closely with Electric Boat and other, you know, other vendors where they helped us to understand the best curriculum that would support them if they were going into plumbing or an electrician or a more hands-on trade. if they were going into plumbing or an electrician or a more hands-on trade. And within both of those courses are spiraled kind of Algebra Two concepts, pre-calculus concepts and whatnot, but they really don't focus specifically on that Algebra Two track. The reason why this, this has to have a discussion with the families per RIDE suggestion is because if a student chooses to take math modeling, for example, if it gets approved in place of Algebra Two, that takes them off of track for being fully prepared to go into a two or four-year college. So it could have implications on their acceptance level and that's why these two courses would really be for a specialized situation with the discussion of the families where all implications are made very clear and the families fill out a waiver that would then get audited by RIDE to make sure that we communicated clearly what the implications of those courses could be on their college readiness. So I'll pause with that because I know that's a little bit of a chunk. Does anybody have questions about the math pathways or the textile class?
Just a comment.
Yeah.
It might, it's not that it might impact that, it will 100% impact that. If they don't have Algebra Two, they're not eligible for Rhode Island College or URI admission per the state's mandate, basically. And so I think that that piece of having those catch cards and making sure that families and students understand that is extremely important. Because I also understand that with the new requirements, we want to make sure that students are getting what they need, but that's an important piece. So just, it's good that you have that understanding.
And the verbiage has also been put in the cheat sheet, there's a section that outlines specifically the math pathway and verbiage was added there to make sure that that's clear.
It is something though that a student could go to CCRI and proceed though. So it's not that it would never, if they wanted to pursue a four-year degree, at some point they could go to CCRI and then achieve that Algebra Two equivalent at that institution.
Right.
So that's good.
Yeah. Any other questions on?
Just one other comment with the textile and design. Not sure with the, something that I've noticed with a lot of textile programs is a connection with chemistry and so something just maybe to consider and explore in the future is maybe the possible overlaps of those two departments, especially with the fabric dyeing and things like that. I see that a lot from a curriculum standpoint. So just a random FYI, but something to think about when you're talking to the faculty.
Absolutely. That's a great point, thank you. Anything else on this piece of the Program of Studies? Awesome. We're almost through.
You're doing great, Jack.
Thank you. So many things.
Truly, thank you for the cheat sheet, it is immensely helpful in understanding what changed and didn't change.
I'm glad, thank you. So this is, we kind of addressed this in an earlier policy, but this is a really exciting element that we're happy to finally include in the Program of Studies. So Peer Partner Physical Education, Ryan Lookavitz was like the leading drive on this and we're so glad that he was. So our students had previously been able to engage in a program called Peer Partners, which was a pass-fail course in which they were assigned into courses to support their students in special education who may need to be in adaptive physical education courses. And they were taking those courses in addition to their own PE. And so what Ryan had pushed through at the state level was those students who are peer partnering should get a physical education credit for their time there and that would also bolster kind of incentive and continue to bolster up that inclusivity. So we're very excited to propose this one and we've gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback from students that they're really excited that this is going to count because for them, you know, something that's pass-fail or just an elective might not be as enticing as fulfilling a graduation requirement.
Just a question about that, why just 12th grade? Like why wouldn't students maybe in 11th grade be eligible to participate in that way and get credit?
That's a really great question. I'd have to go back and discuss that one with the team because I know that there's definitely a reason.
No worries.
This was.
I'm just thinking about it, like from a predictive of engagement and that sort of thing. I'm sure that the folks that made that decision have a good reason too, just curious on the line.
Can I get that back to the team this week? Okay, cool. Good question, thank you. And then the EDU One, Two and Three, that is outlined in your cheat sheet specifically what each course would be offering, but those are the three new courses that would fulfill the pathway for education. We piloted it and kind of connected it to some of the peer partners, the peer partnering that already existed and we piloted it with that group of students. So basically in EDU One, they would be learning the fundamentals of teaching and learning, planning, what goes into teaching, what goes into building up your classroom, building up a lesson plan, et cetera. In EDU Two, they start going more into the methodology and, you know, education psychology and how that, how that ties into what they learned in ED One, how that would tie into scaffolding and differentiation and planning. And then EDU Three is where they kind of get more of those advanced skills and they physically go either on our campus or off campus to work almost in a practicum type setting for that 80 hours. So those three courses build on one another through that pathway. They can be taken ninth, 10th, 11th, or 10th, 11th and 12th, depending on when the student gets into the pathway. And again, by the end of that, those three courses are effectively setting them up to be able to take the teacher, the teacher assistant certification programming afterwards. Does anybody have any questions about those pieces?
I just had one quick one.
Yeah.
I think that it's amazing that we're, we're pursuing this pathway. One, I guess, comment thought is just, I understand and I agree that the TA certification is a great choice, but I'm curious if you all think that the enrollment in this program would be more for students that were not going to pursue a four-year degree in education or if it, you know, like kind of what you would imagine the student population to be? Because I could imagine it would be a lot of students that might be interested in pursuing, becoming a teacher and going on to a four-year degree. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity to partner with Rhode Island College or somewhere where they might be able to get some credit, like course credit for some of these courses versus the TA certificate? Because, do you know what I mean?
So, yeah, so the, as far as partnerships with Rhode Island College, yes, we have partnerships with Rhode Island College as far as the early enrollments courses are concerned, but for the education piece in general, I think we'll have to explore that a little bit more to see if there's, there's alignment with those particular courses.
Yeah.
And Rhode Island College.
There was discussions with Salve on this. So our team kind of spoke to Salve Regina, which does have kind of a liaison program like that and what that might look like on our end. And we've been modeling how we're building this on eventually having that discussion and seeing how that would align with other institutions too.
I almost wonder if they're, kind of what you were talking about, there could be two different tracks because I also think it is extremely important for students who might not be pursuing a four-year degree to be able to pursue that TA track. And so, you know, like I don't want to just see it shift one way or the other.
Yeah.
And again, I know you're developing this and you all are the experts on this, but just seeing some opportunities for, Rachel's twitching over there if you want.
Yeah, there's already, you can already get credit at CCRI for taking the TA classes there. So there might be a way to link with CCRI for those who might want to go there and get that, that extra credit.
Yeah, I was saying that and/or other programs to get them to kind of like that Computer Science one or different things to add some value to when they transition to a different place. So just something to think about.
It's always nice to have options within the programs too, like you can go a few different ways depending on what your goals are. So, so having that would be a nice, a nice.
This is a great first, first step, I think it's great.
And frankly, exactly this discussion is what's holding criminal justice up because there's so many pathways in just that. So that's, that's definitely an internal discussion and I made note to bring that back to our team. Anything else on these items? Great. This one's pretty quick. So we removed two classes and they're really just to make room for those that were added and other elements. So College Engineering and Technical Honors has, and Technology Honors hasn't run in four years and also the only teacher that's certified to teach it is retiring this year, so that was part of it. But also the Intro to Computer and Data Science will replace this in terms of FTE. So that was the logic there. And Sports Nutrition is being removed to accommodate Culinary Three. There also was a decline in enrollment, if any, over the last few years in sports nutrition and so we're hoping that we can bolster up that FT, that use of the FTE through the Culinary Three. And that's the whole thing. Thanks, guys.
Clap it up.
Thanks.
Any questions from the committee regarding this or anything Dr. Duvan or Mr. Mizanati that you want to?
I just want to thank you. I mean, everything that's here, it's impressive what we are able to offer at the high school and how we're able to continually add other programs and options for our students. So thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Two, two quick questions. One is to Mr. Mizanati, is there a potential that we might need to revisit the Program of Studies based on the grading policy conversations? Maybe, I don't know if there's anything.
So I'd have to go, I'd have to go back and thumb through that.
Maybe just something to keep an eye on as we, as we.
Yeah, so I know that, I'll go back and thumb through exactly the language in the, in the Program of Studies on grading.
I know class ranks in there, I know some things like that are in there, I know waiting, so I do think, just something to keep in mind and that's totally fine if we, if it approves now and then we have to adapt or change.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate that.
Yeah.
Let me look into it.
No worries. And then the last question I had was about, you mentioned a couple times certifications for different programs, so the TA certification, the other certifications. Are there caught, direct costs to students for those pieces or like when they're, the German, like how does that work from a funding standpoint that might be, like, I guess what I'm asking is there, are there financial barriers for students to participate in those programs?
Not that I am aware of, but I'll check on that. In terms of German, that, they, we had to adopt their curriculum basically, so we're teaching their curriculum and those students receive that credit because of that liaison. So there's no financial barrier there. In terms specifically of kind of the TA certifications and some of the culinary certifications, from what I understand, they've been, they would have been integrated into the budget conversation. Chevalli, that's Chevalli's baby, so I would have to just report back to her to see if there's any specific items, but I don't recall with any of the programs that being an item, yeah, so I can get back on that.
Yeah.
I can think of one for the TA, they'd have to take their par, if they're not preparing for you, they have to take their par pro.
Yeah.
I believe that's like 60 bucks.
Yeah.
It sounds like that's an outlier, I just wanted to make sure that there, there wasn't barriers for students participating in these programs.
But along those lines, actually, and, and maybe this is something that's been discussed before and I apologize, what about, I'm thinking about AP classes?
Yeah.
It's a concern. I understand it's a lot of, you know, I mean, to some people it's a lot, it's all relative, right?
Yeah, right, right, right.
But if you take, especially to take multiple or would like to take multiple, I'm just curious, I don't know, is there any financial help for AP exam, students who want to take it and maybe.
Yes.
Struggle to afford it.
Yes, we do, we have, essentially, the best way to say is we have a slush fund. So, you know, the students. Huh?
There's no slush fund.
There's no slush funds.
Alex can budget that.
There's no slush funds, we have monies. We have funding available for students that are free or reduced. There's no slush funds.
The course doesn't cost money, it's just the exam. So a student in the way could take the AP course and not sit for the exam too, but also there is some financial support, it sounds like.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, we have a student account that we can support that with.
Okay. So, you can say, okay, so no more further discussion on this one? Okay, so this is a motion to approve and so, if there's no other questions, we'll call the question. Okay. All's in favor of approving the 2025, 2026 Program of Studies, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to item B, very good. Can we get a motion to approve for item B?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any questions on, just to clarify, Dr. Duvan, I'm sorry, we do need, you want, you're looking for approval on this.
Yeah, so this, this is approval, not, not for us to put the program in place right now, Rachel's going to present on this, give you an overview of the program. She's looking for approval from the committee to move forward and have conversations with ORS and BHCDH of the possibility of bringing this program to North Kingston. You know, if we move forward, then it'll be coming back as part of the budget process because if we do put this program in place, we'll need a teacher and a TA for the program. So there's no budget request for tonight, it's, she's, just wants to provide the overview to you and, and approval from you to move forward to continually having these conversations with the outside agencies to possibly have this in place next year.
Okay, so right, so today we're looking to approve, this Project Search does not exist in North Kingston right now.
Does not exist in North Kingston right now.
We are hoping to implement it starting in FY.
For next school year, yeah, for FY '26.
And the only cost that would be associated with this is hiring staff.
Right, so if, if you approve tonight for her to move forward, once you hear about the project, we will have to put staffing in the budget for next year.
So do you want Rachel to present what we haven't heard of us?
Yes, she is.
Oh, come on up, Rachel. You have to come to the, come on up, I thought you were just here for funds and.
Oh, you know.
Okay. Do you have our PowerPoint, Joni?
We all, we do have it and it is available to the public too, so for some reason we can't.
I have it here too.
We can click it. All right, well, so I'll start with just the history. So Project Search actually is a nationwide agency that provides opportunities for students to learn within real-life businesses. This is for students who are done with their high school credits and they're working on their transition services. So let me, I'll talk a little bit about North Kingston. North Kingston in general, our transition services, the Sale Academy and all that, has really been concentrating on students who would normally be found eligible under the alternate assessment, so students with more severe disabilities. And the population that we haven't tapped as well as we probably should and could are the students who may not want to go to a four-year college, may want to go to a two-year college, not quite sure what they want to do, maybe they just want to work, they really don't want to go to school any longer. A lot of these students have struggled in school, school's hard for them and they want to have a job where they get paid and that's what they're interested in being. So this particular project kind of works on that population of the student, the student that is very physically capable or has, have the ability to do lots of different skills, they have good critical thinking skills, they can, they have the ability to work and things along those lines. This project started, the idea of this project started prior to me being here and actually before COVID and I believe Kim Carson and Sid were involved at that particular time. It somehow, over time and then COVID, it all collapsed and then it's been revamped. So, do we have that presentation? I don't know. Okay, so.
We, I, we have it, so.
It's attached, I'm trying to get it.
Okay. So why don't we just start, why don't you start reading the slides?
Yeah, sure, so I'm Sid Sweeney, I am a special education teacher in the RISE program at the high school. And I have, like Rachel said, back in 2019 and 2020, we were approached by ORS and Joblot to try to make a partnership to create a Project Search program. We kind of got the ball rolling, we toured Joblot's headquarters down in Quonset, which are incredible and massive and it really is a great place. And so we kind of got that started and then things kind of fell through and then COVID happened, so maybe it all happened for a reason there. But we just wanted to give you a quick overview of what Project Search is. So like Rachel said, it started back in 96 at the Cincinnati Children's Hospital and they, the founder that was working there and she realized that their hospital served students with developmental disabilities but didn't hire them and they had a lot of turnover in entry-level jobs and she felt that if their hospital was there to support them, then they should be able to work in a facility like that. So she started what is Project Search. So currently worldwide, there are over 600 sites, most of them in the US. In Rhode Island, there are currently three. There's one at Merriam Hospital partnered with Providence, Blue Cross and Bruschild, which is partnered with Cranston, and then there's one at Valley's Twin River, which is an adult service program through ORS. So these programs provide students with real-life work experiences as well as training in employability and independent living skills. So for us, what that would mean would be a partnership between the school department here, Ocean State Joblot, ORS, BHCDH and a community rehab provider, so somebody like a Perspectives or Launched Beginnings.
If you can probably read.
Yeah, so ORS, Office of Rehab Services and BHCDH is Behavioral Healthcare, Developmental Disabilities and Hospitals. So each party brings something to the table, like Rachel said, we would provide the special educator and a job coach. So that would be our financial obligation. Joblot provides a physical classroom, so they would need to carve out a space in their warehouse for, for the classroom. They provide job sites throughout their headquarters as well as potentially their store on Frenchtown Road as well as the Wellness Center on Post Road. So it's great that we have all of those opportunities, you know, so close to us. They would also provide things like wifi, tech needs, access to copiers, printers, things that, you know, as a teacher we would have access to within our buildings, they would provide access to in their building. Joni, I think I'm on slide three, if that helps. Oh, Victor, sorry. ORS is the, they're the employment expert, so what ORS provides to. Um, ORS is the, they're the employment experts, so what ORS provides to, to students, um, is employment benefits. So they are a short-term organization that helps students find and maintain employment, and they can provide job coaches and things. And then when students, um, are actually adults and they're in the adult world, they, they back off as students, um, you know, if they need more support, those can come in. So, uh, ORS comes and goes, whereas BHCDH provides long-term funding for students after they exit, um, school services. So BHCDH would provide the funding for all of the long-term employment for anyone who goes through this program. And the CRP, the Community Res, uh, Resource Provider, would help secure employment for any student in Project Search outside of Project Search. So we don't anticipate Joblot to be the one that hires everybody who goes through this program, but their experience at Joblot is what will hopefully get them employment outside of that year. So there, this team would meet, uh, they meet monthly, um, with the student and with families, and they, they create resumes, they practice interview skills, they go out, they do interviews, they apply for jobs, with the hope that by this time the student finishes the program in June, they've secured employment. So who participates in Project Search? Um, students have to be at least eighteen years old, and they must have have completed all of their graduation requirements, so crossing the stage, but not receiving their diploma. And then this might be for students who are not college-bound, may need more vocational training, um, are interested in learning more about the workforce. So during the year at Project Search, there's both a functional and vocational academic piece, as well as an internship. So the day would start, we were able to go and see the Blue Cross and the Merriam programs a few years ago. So they start their day in the classroom with the teacher and the job coach, and they are working on workplace readiness skills, resume building, interview skills, self-adequacy, maybe they're talking about something that happened the previous day, and how they, to deal with that, or how to move forward with that, communication, hygiene, all of those skills that, that we need to be employed. Um, and then students go out and they do three ten-week rotations within the Joblot site. So in our case, it would be within the Joblot site, so maybe they do ten weeks in their food service, maybe they do ten weeks doing something clerical in another department, and maybe they do ten weeks in like their warehouse, the Joblot warehouse. Um, so that way they get to, you know, try all different things before they really decide where they may want to pursue a job for the future. And what's great about this is there is a special educator and a job coach, but there are all the natural supports from the Joblot employees. So, um, while there may be, say, six students, and you know, the teacher is with one and a job coach is with another, the idea is that the Joblot employees become those natural supports for these students as well. Um, and I know that at Merriam and at Blue Cross, um, both teachers that we spoke to said that all of the employees were so receptive of having these students there, and they really did take them under their wing. Um, and both programs have been very successful. So the ultimate goal of Project Search is employment, um, competitive employment, paid employment, year-round, non-seasonal. The goal would be at least sixteen hours a week or more at prevailing wage. Um, and then, of course, we want any student who comes out of this to have self-confidence, appropriate job goals, the understanding of supports they might need, and being able to advocate for those supports. So maybe a student needs a checklist to make sure that they complete their job, or maybe they need, you know, their schedule broken down into the hours, but being able to advocate for their needs, um, and be able to maintain the demands of holding a steady job, and what it means to hold a steady job. And you can't just call out sick because you just, it's raining out. Um, so, um, since two thousand seventeen, Project Search in Rhode Island participants have maintained a seventy percent employment placement rate, which I think has been great. So we are just asking to continue this conversation, um, moving forward with Joblot and these, and these agencies.
Yeah, so.
There is a short video of a student at Merriam, it's about two minutes long, if you'd like to watch, you can watch it on your own time. Um, but ORS would provide this video for us if anyone's interested.
You can watch it on our own time?
Sure.
But I'll watch it.
Yeah.
So we were anticipating, I believe the program does ten students, correct, Sid?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, they want about ten students. Right now, we're anticipating that really only, it would be about four from our own district, is what I'm guessing. Again, we, we've been, I've been a little bit cautious in discussing this project in too much detail without having this conversation here because of the financial implications. And I didn't want, they were really kind of going quickly with lots of meetings, I'm like, whoa, whoa, whoa. I, I really need to bring this to school committee to discuss before we have yet another meeting to, to figure out what to do. Um, so, once, um, if this does get approved, we would, we would be open to other districts tuitioning their kids here to attend this particular program. But I wouldn't be able to tell you right now, like, I have so many coming from this district, and so many, again, because we've been, um, very hesitant to just, to talk about this too much. I did bring it to my colleagues in the southern area, two of the school districts, one we already have, Jamestown, and the other districts having, uh, is very small and is a hard time maintaining their own transition program, so they wouldn't be, um, interested. But Kim Carson is now in South Kingstown, she may be interested in sending a kid or two, because we all have this population of students where we want to provide additional transition services, but we want to make it meaningful, and a lot of our kids don't want to be in the building. They want to go and be out of there. So this would be, uh, provide us a really nice opportunity. A financial implication though, is about a hundred, approximately a hundred and fifty grand, without tuition.
I just have a quick question about, um, going out to other districts. I understand right now, there might only be about four, but in the future, let's say our need grows, the caveat would be.
It'd be us, yeah. It's a one-year program, so kids can't stay there, so it wouldn't be like we'd have four, and then, so if next year we, uh, maybe we only have two this year, maybe next year we have four, maybe the year after that, we have all ten. To me, I think we would take priority. Especially, and, and one of the suggestions, because I did pushback, I did ask if there's a grant that we could apply for. Um, it seems very grantable, you know, is, is, there's something really cool about it that we could probably.
It's a good word.
Grantable, I don't know if it's a real word, you guys.
It is, now.
Not this way, but, so I am looking for grants to be able to fund this and sustain it, um, I'm always willing to do that. ORS and BHCDH, both are adult agencies, they really only take over when kids are ready to leave, and they receive their actual diploma from us, not when they just walk the stage. Um, the, their really financial burden is supporting that student getting to the adult world. They don't give any money back essentially to the district. So that was a little bit, but, that was a little bit, um, that's a little bit hard, because we want to do this, but at the same time, there's not a lot of financial support. Um, so, you know, that's, that's why we came here to really kind of ask about it, we'd like to go to the next meeting. They are very much aware.
Yeah, they have already set up a time for us to hopefully go in and tour the Joblot facility again, um, and see what that might look like moving forward.
But they're very much aware that it's coming here tonight, so I said that we're not guaranteeing that.
Other questions?
So it's, is the max ten kids?
I believe that's what they told us.
Yes.
And you said it's like after they graduate?
So after they finish their high school requirements, so students would walk the stage with their class, and instead of receiving their diploma, they receive a certificate of achievement. It's a really good, you know, alternative. Um, and then the school department, we hold the diploma until they finish all school services, and so this would count at that. So maybe a student, you know, finishes their twelfth grade year, they spend a year in our Sale program within our school building, and then they come to Project Search, or maybe they come right to Project Search after twelfth grade. Um, it, it really all is dependent on students, and they have to apply to this program, so there is an application process. Um, they have to have an interview, so it's not just like, hey, I want to do that.
Are students eligible to do it more than once? Because thinking about the eight, no.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
And you may, you may not be aware too, is that we educate kids up to age of twenty-two.
Well, that's what I was, that's.
So we have kids that may be in our high school for seven or eight years, right? So this is something that as kids are ready, they really do have to be a little more independent than some of our current students, although we have some students now that would be really eligible for this program. But then we have a larger population of students that may need a little bit more assistance and may not be quite ready for Project Search.
And we have some that won't, won't ever participate in this.
Never, ever.
Uh, but yes, this was designed to be the last year of schooling for any student.
Yeah, so if they were going to be at the high school for twenty-two, they'd go when they're twenty-one, kind of in a.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, they're done by their twenty-second birthday.
Other questions?
I guess my question is, what is the actual ask then, this evening, of this school committee?
Essentially, I'm asking to have additional meetings to talk the case.
So they're looking to be able to move forward with this, to have further conversations, um, to potentially bring this back to us at budget time.
So, in theory, I don't, you don't need, we, in theory, you don't need our approval, but I also understand why you're here. But I also am very concerned about saying like, at, like, this is such a good program. I am, as, in my soul, very, very supportive, but without knowing the larger picture of the budget needs and constraints, and other things that are going to come forward, it's very hard to say, absolutely, we can do this program and you can have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like, I just don't know the full picture right now. Um, so I appreciate the update, I, I don't, I think it's. Continue, I think it's worth continuing to pursue it, um, and then we would absolutely be able to have that.
I think that's all we need to know, right, from the school committee's stance.
Yeah, so we can remove the.
Is it worth us pursuing, right? We're not asking for approval of a budgetary item at this time. We're just looking like, would, would this be supported by the school committee for us to look into this further, right? And then to be able to, at budget time?
It would come back separately.
To bring it back, saying this is a, this is a program we want to propose within the budget for next year.
I had another question. So during those ten weeks when they're, um, working at Joblot, it, are they getting paid?
No.
So it's like, so this is a question, could we ask Joblot to provide money to pay for it?
No.
No, okay, I'm only asking, because obviously giving them ten years to someone working.
They, they could during their time there obtain paid employment, um, but no, it is not part of our program. Just like now, when we have students go out as part of our Sale program to do their community-based work, that is not a paid employment. We do have some students who are getting paid because they went out and applied for a job, and we are supporting them during school hours, but it is not a requirement of this.
Essentially, can be paid outside of school hours, so some of our ki- kids may get hired in the evening or the afternoons. But if this school day, if you're, again, we're expending the cost for them to have, be part of the position, it's usually not a paid position.
Okay.
Plus their learning. What I like about Joblot, though, I feel like there's a lot more opportunities for different types of jobs that you wouldn't get in the hospital settings, because you have stocking, but there's those forklifts, if someone's able to do that, if there's food service. There's a whole bunch of other different types of jobs that most of the other Project Searches that I've seen don't have.
Oh, no, I think it's great. I was just saying, but it still is also, it benefits Joblot too, because it's someone that is doing something that someone else they would have to pay to do.
Potentially, but it's not, they wouldn't be replacing the Joblot employee.
Right, they should be working alongside them, so it's, I think, like, as students go through.
Okay, so I hear what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, those years.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, like, I know. It benefits them because they can potentially hire, employ, they can employ people at the end. They're also a very service-minded organization, so I think this is part of their vision of their own business. If you see, they give back to veterans, they do all sorts of other work, so it's sort of in their, their frame to do things like this. Um, but they wouldn't be replacing a worker, that, that wouldn't be allowed by their company either. And you have to understand, our, our students need a lot of instruction.
Okay.
Most of them need a lot of instruction on how to.
You could think of more as internship.
Yeah.
Within the program.
Are there any transportation issues involved?
Yeah, we would have to transport them to, from school, from home to Joblot, um, warehouse.
Yeah, so I do believe the philosophy of Project Search is that the students get to the site independently. As part of, as employees, we get to our job sites independently. What we have learned is that the Quonset Development Park, and I'm not sure of their exact name, they provide, I believe there's a, a bus stop near Coles that they do provide, because Reptile will drop there, but Reptile doesn't go further into Quonset, that they provide transportation from there to all the different sites in Quonset. So students who may need to take public transportation would get there, and then they could take, they could be provided transportation from Quonset.
Appreciate that you say that, because I look every day at that group of people, and I think, why are they standing there? Like, it, that makes sense, that makes sense now, um, so that helps my brain on my way home. Um, but that's great that they have that, that hybrid transportation.
Yeah, we have had students in the past, Newport Hospital used to have a Project Search site through Middletown, it has folded, but we've sent students there, and either their parents have driven them, they've taken public transportation, or they've, so we've had students Uber, so.
We're not required to provide transportation as students, like, just like we would for out-of-district.
It's, it's just part of the Project Search's philosophy of.
Yeah, but I'm talking about our philosophy from our requirements for students.
I think ultimately, push to shove, if this is an IP, because this would be an IP team decision, and you are required to provide transportation for them in order for them to receive their special education services, so.
I also like the idea of them learning how to, but I don't want it to be a barrier of them participating.
Right.
Correct, but push comes to shove, we would have to provide it if it's an IP team decision.
Yeah.
But it may be not providing it all the way out to Quonset, maybe we provide it to Coles and they take the bus. You know, there might be other ways that we could look at that, to do, to get them to be independent, but still provide what we need to provide them for special ed law.
Any other questions from the committee? I got the not so answers, I guess. So, just to clarify, um, it's, it sounds to me that, that, that the committee's, I, I guess, I hear what Rachel's saying, like, they don't want to pursue conversations if during budget season, we're going to say absolutely not. And obviously, we don't know all of the different budget implications, but I guess the, the question to the committee, and it's more of a pulse.
Philosophy, I think.
Thing is like, is it okay if they continue to have conversations and that we see this as part of the budget proposal? We're not saying yes or no, that we'll approve it at this point, but just, I think as far as staffing time and whatnot, that is what is being asked, correct?
I would say yes, because you are all well aware of what we're saying, is that in terms of budget, we actually just can't give you an answer. So as long as you're comfortable with that, and the people you're working with are very clear on that, what's the timeline for giving that decision?
I have been a bit of a player. Um, well, the next meeting, we find out more in January, I think it's January fourteenth now, so we'd find out more about what they're, what they're looking at for a timeline. I am concerned about the budget, I'm extremely concerned, which may be even more cautious about this project.
Is there a possibility, um, to share the staffing costs perhaps with another district? Like, maybe talking to some of the other ones that might be willing to send students and saying, hey, we'll take five students, you take five students spot, and we share the cost of the staff, or something like that, like, again, this, I think this is phenomenal, I think it's great, but when I'm thinking about adding staff, like, that's two other positions we will either have to eliminate, or won't be able to add in other areas. And so I wonder if that's something.
They have done that in other districts, my concern regarding that is now you have different union contracts. So I, I thought about this.
It would still, it would still be shared, it would be shared, but it's still going to be done through a tuition, right? So you'd have to base off.
So I, I would prefer that there are staff and we do it by tuition. Then we would do it like, okay, you provide the TA, but what if now they don't have any students and they pull their TA? Or the year after that, we have eight students we want to send, and they've now been providing the TA. To me, it's cleaner if there are staff, they're under our contract, our union agreement, we might have GMOA for this anyways, because it's a little bit different. Um, and then we tuition kids in. To me, that seems a little bit cleaner than trying to share.
We won't make revenue from the tuition.
No, no, what I was thinking about, it's hundred and fifty divided by ten, and it's fifteen thousand dollars each, that's kind of what I was looking at, not profit-making, but that. I do think we have to add in a little bit in case people drop out. That, that's my only.
Right, so it sounds like the committee is supportive of you continuing it, but also with the caveat of like, we might get.
I understand.
Too, but, I know, but I, I just want to be, it, it stinks that that is the, the reality, but I think it's worth, I think it's an interesting.
Yeah, I, I would say the agencies seem to think that was no big deal, a hundred and fifty grand. I don't think they understood that a teacher and teacher assistant, that's about how much it costs, maybe slightly more depending on who you hire.
Does that include benefits or not include benefits?
I don't believe they, yeah, because they're teachers and teacher assistants.
No, but the number you gave us, is that the salary, or is that the all-in?
Yeah, that's about, a, a teacher is about a hundred thousand, and the TA is about fifty thousand, about, again, depending on what number it is.
With, with salary and benefits.
With salary and benefits. So they, the agencies didn't seem like that was that big of an amount of money.
Yeah, they're wrong.
I'm like, no, that, that's a big amount of money, that's money that.
Again, it's all relative.
So, sort of funny, but we, we will do this with caution, I will constantly tell them that we are not, still not agreeing, I'm not signing anything, we're not committing to anything, because we can't commit to the financial burden.
Yep.
I'm kind of hoping maybe someone will donate.
Great.
You never know.
Well, this will give you the opportunity to find out what all these other expenses could possibly be.
Correct, and then you never know, maybe, maybe, maybe Joblot says, hey, we're willing to kick in a little bit, or, who knows?
Right, yeah, I mean, it's willing to ask that.
I'm willing to ask that, and I'm willing to do a grant.
So you'll, you can work that out with Dr. Duvan and, during the budget process, um, but, um, thank you so much for sharing the information with us.
Yeah, thanks.
We really appreciate it. Uh, we did have a motion to approve, but we will just.
No.
Yeah.
Pass on that, right, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it easier if they withdraw it, Andrew? So who made that motion?
I'll withdraw it.
Can we do discuss?
No, but the motion was to approve.
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw the motion.
Yeah. Okay, so that, then we're good. Just, just note that we withdrew the motion, thank you. Okay, moving on to, um, item C, can I get a motion to approve the designated authorized signatories?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, um, just for discussion, this is something that, I believe, Andrew, if I'm correct, um, in theory, gets done every time there's a new school committee turnover, um, so sometimes it's at the biannual, it's at this one. Um, it gives the staff the signatory rights, um, they already have it from the old school committee, but I think just procedurally, we do it, um, with the new school committee, it's kind of a formality, for lack of a better word.
Sure.
Any questions or clarification on that?
Nope.
Okay, and there's no changes from what we had. Okay, and there's no changes from what we had previous, correct? Okay, so that one, uh, so we'll call the question on that one, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next one, uh, can I get a motion for item D?
Uh, was this, are, is there gonna be any discussion on if we make a motion, so?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just, just to clarify, cause I know it's our first one, so we make the motion, the motion, cause the motion basically says from the committee that we're even willing to talk about this item, like if there wasn't a motion in a second, we would absolutely not even touch it. Usually because we work with, on the agenda with Dr. Duba, we get to the point of at least talking about it, then we'll go in discussion, and then we can ask questions, Dr. Duba can provide additional information. But we usually try to start with the motion just for the purposes of the conversation.
So should we make a motion, should I make a motion to approve?
Right off the bat, okay, motion to approve? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll open up for discussion, Dr. Duba, anything you want to let us know about this one? This is the computer purchase, Leslie, but Leslie, you have friends that are willing to do it for you.
Um, so this is a, this is a purchase that is coming through the IT department, it's grant-funded through the Feinstein grant for Forest Park. Um, it includes, um, it includes two things, the first is, which is the higher number, is the, um, View Sonic boards for, um, technology access in classrooms, and the second is the, um, the, the, the software. Um, so the licensure that goes with the, with the product, so it's hardware and software, um, grant-funded, and it is for, to upgrade technology at, um, Forest Park.
I just had one question on this, um, it came directly from the principal, and so I just wanted to make sure that our new, um, the tech department.
Yes.
If they, they're into it, they know it, this is something that they want, okay?
I will inform them today, yeah.
You sure?
Okay, Leslie, wanna jump in?
That's perfect, I just wanted to make sure that they were tied in.
Leslie's got her hand up.
You just have to come, sorry. You're also always welcome at the table, Leslie, any, any suggestions?
No, I'm, I'm good, plus nobody wants to be near me, cause I'm not feeling well.
I'm so sorry.
Uh, the IT director, and I actually worked on this together for the school, and it's gone through many iterations, which is why we put it on the school committee calendar because we weren't originally sure if they were gonna be over the threshold for each of the boards, or if the Feinstein money was going to come through, um, which is why we put it there. But he and I worked very closely, we got the quotes together, and we worked with the school. Um, we did have the principal put all of the information together because it was Feinstein money, so we asked him to put that through, and then it came to myself, and I signed off on it with Chaz.
Any clarification, um, can you just clarify for me why it's Forest Park and not another school in the district?
Um, so Forest Park has three classrooms that did not have, um, I, and this predates me, but with some SR money, a lot of the classrooms got View Sonic boards. They have three classrooms that did not have it, um, and they were in receipt of this Feinstein grant, and they asked if it was, if this was something that they could use. I said I would bring it to the school committee, so this was their decision, they wanted to have equity in the classrooms, they wanted to make sure that everybody had the same thing, so that's why they chose to do that.
Understood, the clarification, that's helpful, anything else on this one? Okay, here now for the discussion, we'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Your boards, how exciting. Okay, we're moving on to item E. So, let's do a motion to discuss.
Second.
Great, um, okay, I'll make a motion to discuss for a second, um, and so Dr. Duba, um, do you want to give us, um, for Leslie, someone?
Yeah, it goes, so at our last budget and finance advisory committee meeting, um, we had the agenda to, um, discuss the possibility of providing these quarterly reports um, to the school committee, um, this was discussed, uh, with Leslie, as well as, as the reports and feasibility of doing so. We're in agreement with it, and so now it's here for the school committee to approve, if this is something you want to see brought to you each quarter. Um, it's something that we know it's doable, and then you have the information, the data to provide us.
Thank you, so do we, so just to clarify, the budget and finance advisory committee members made a motion and approved advising the school committee in formally requesting a quarterly analysis of budget, um, for the actual, for current year, quarterly fund balance data, quarterly review of checking account and quarterly review of key budget drivers for current fiscal year, and this is something that the school committee needs to approve?
Well, because it's, it's a recommendation coming from the advisory committee, it needs to go to the school committee for approval of the reports.
Tell you what, approval of the reports?
Of, of approval of this, um, report.
Providing the reports.
Yeah, 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 and so, um, I guess my question on that would be, um, does, does, does the director of finance agree with this, uh, these recommendations? And then also, what, is this beyond what we're, or, like, what kind of details, I guess, would the school committee get? Beyond what we already receive, is I guess my question.
So, the, a lot of these reports were the suggestions of committee members, um, for, on the advisory committee, and of things that they would like to be, you know, informed on. And in the discussions, we thought that this is also information that really should be going to the school committee, at least on some regular schedule. So although I currently do provide reports at least once a month on, you know, the, the general fiscal goings-on of the department, um, as well as anything important that comes up, these would be standards that we could count on, that you would see. So at a minimum quarterly, you would be able to have a budget to actual or a fund balance. Typically, these are things that I would provide anyway, but we wanted to be able to say, like, documented, that at a minimum quarterly, the school committee would get them.
So it's, so we're already getting them?
Some of them, so, um, I want to say the, the key budget drivers is not something that has typically been provided in the past. This, the basis for that was looking as we go through the year, as I'm doing projections, or if I'm looking at different budget actuals, if there were areas that I wanted to bring to the attention of the school committee or the budget committee, to say, hey, we really need to look at what's going on with our substitutes or our invoices are not coming in in a timely manner for some of our tuitions. These would be things that would be addressed, they would be in that report, they, because they're going to be impacting what's happening in our current budget, and then we would bring that to the school committee. So it's just key areas that, um, for example, maintenance expenses was one of the things that came up that they wanted to highlight. So it was just things that you wouldn't typically probably present to the school committee because it would be a one-off thing, but we would be able to identify those at least quarterly. And then if there was something that we thought we needed to report to you, we could. It's possible that when we do these quarterly reports, it might not be information that we feel needs to go to the school committee. So it would be presented to the budget and finance committee first, and then if they thought it was important, they would make the recommendations to have that presented to the school committee. That's at least the, the thought behind it.
So I'm reading this, and I'm thinking that since this was already their recommendation, and obviously, we all asked them, appointed them to be on the committee because they know what they're talking about, I would assume, and if you agree with, you know, if you also believe this is a good recommendation, I think that's something to take into consideration. In other words, I, you know, I, I defer to kind of the experts on if you think this is necessary, and they do it as well, I think that's important to, to note.
I, I do think, I think it's important to have them, and like I said, it's at least saying, you know, we're, we're committed to at, at a minimum on a quarterly basis to provide this information. The hope is that we are going to provide it more frequently, um, but at least we have it, you know, documented that you will be getting information in a steady, you know, course of action over the course of the year.
One other question that I had, um, and I agree, agree with Megan on like, especially with the administration, like, saying like, yes, this is, uh, important, this is possible and important information. Um, we have on our, within our policies in section D for fiscal management, there's a variety of policies, and so, is this something? I, I just get nervous whenever we say, like, we're going to do quarterly this and different things like that, um, especially when staff changes and different things, figuring out how to document like what the school committee approves and, and is required, and so, um, I guess I, I don't know if there's anything else that are in any of those policies that talk about kind of some fiscal reporting structures or whatnot, but just something to think about is like, how do we keep track of if we approve these, like, these mandates?
Okay, I mean, it's certainly something that Dr. Duba and I can look at and go through and make sure that.
We can see, I mean, if we want to address what reports we are going to provide, maybe there is a policy that's put in place so that we can document it.
Too. No, I hate to add a policy, that's why I'm saying, or, or within, maybe just take a look at those, I just don't want, what I have noticed in everything is that when staff changes, it's very hard to keep record of things like this, and what we're, you know, so I think just trying to figure out what the best way to do it.
Right, but it's something that we add, you know, we have a policy under annual budget, right? And maybe part of the annual budget, um, we add a section with, um, reports that are to be provided, um, to the school committee. Um, in that policy, there's a section on recording the use of funds, but it also gets into.
Yeah, so just something to look at, cause I do think it would be good to.
But it's, you can add within that policy not to write on another policy, because to have a section very, you know.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Little coverage of, here are the poli, here are the reports that will be, be provided to the school committee on quarterly basis, monthly basis, annual basis.
And Erin, I think that's a valid concern, I think that, um, you know, the other thing to consider is just the fact that that was a, a new advisory committee. So I think with all these new advisory committees, we're gonna probably run into issues like this, where we might have to amend a policy or actually add a new short one, hopefully, but I, I understand your concerns, I'm like.
Yeah, so like, I'm very com, I'm comfortable with, with Leslie and Dr. Duba's endorsement, like, to approve these today, but then with the, the recommendation that we figure out some, some way to work it into either an existing policy, or just make a short policy on, um, like, financial report, some, I don't know, something.
Procedure.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can just add it to the policy.
I bet it could fit into something else, yeah.
Because this is all related.
And, and I know one of the things that was talked about in the committee meeting was that this is what we're recommending right now, but as we go through the process, we might find that these reports are not helpful, or they're cumbersome, or it's not necessary to do it quarterly, maybe we only do it twice a year. So this was kind of our initial thought with the understanding that as the committee starts getting the information and you start getting presentations, that we can adjust that so that it fits the needs of what you're looking for.
So maybe something that we could do is, if this gets approved this evening, um, just make a note to circle back maybe in June. Uh, because I don't want to add something to a policy or create a policy that we might find unuseful, so maybe try it out for the spring, and then we can circle back on that at a later date. Okay, any other questions regarding this? We do have a motion to approve the recommendation from the budget and finance advisory committee, um, to have these different reports, um, produced quarterly to be presented to them, and then as needed, presented to the school committee. Any further conversation? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, thank you, and thank you, uh, to, for the work for, to the budget advisory, budget and finance advisory. Uh, moving on to, for item D, or item F, uh, do we have a motion for item F?
Um, motion to discuss.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Ms. Riley, do you want to start with this one?
Did you say my name?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, Ms. Riley, do you, do you want to start with this one, sorry?
Not used to being called that.
I know, it's, it's, sometimes I do it, sometimes I don't.
I know, I know.
It feels weird both ways, to be honest.
Um, yes, so I did ask for this to be put on because I would like to, um, discuss the policy advisory committee in general and some issues that I was noting with, um, it seems to be some conflicting information on a couple policies that we have regarding this committee. Um, the other thing, I, I really don't know where to exactly start with this, because it's kind of a chicken egg thing. Um, I think the, the big thing I'd like to discuss is the composition, be, and I know that, um, some of you have already talked about this and going forward, hopefully want to change that, right now, um, for public consumption here, we have the two school committee members who sit on it, and then Dr. Duba, you know, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and Mr. Meznadi. So right now, that's just four people, and you have fifty percent of that committee coming back to make up forty percent of this committee to vote on the policies that the policy subcommittee kicks back up to us. So, um, I guess the first, i- it, this is multi-parts, but the composition is an issue because if you start out with policy BCF, which is in the packet, and this is, these are available online, so everybody can easily access these, but if you look at, um, page two of BCF at the top, um, it says, the chair shall call for nominations, members may self-nominate of up to two members to each advisory committee. And then if you go to the actual, um, BGA one.
One second, Andrew, just clarification on talking about other policies that aren't on the agenda?
What do we have listed, just the?
We have policy advisory committee and.
And that's the, that's the one you're referring to right now?
No, BCF is, is advisory committees in liaison, I just want to make sure that we're being tr, like, okay with the agenda.
Yeah, policy advisory committee, yeah, I, I think for, I think for discussion purposes, it's just, are we talking about just discussion for tonight?
Yeah, discussion, because I, I, there's, it's conflicted, it's, it's conflicts with another policy, so.
I think it's almost we're just doing the discussion portion of it, and we're kind of piggybacking off this one, I think that's fine.
Okay, just wanted to check, thank you, continue, Megan, sorry.
Okay, no problem, um, so basically, it's saying in BCF, um, you can, it can, you can have up to two members, and then if you look at BGA, and let me find it, it actually calls specifically for two members of the school committee, so right off the bat, it's, and I, and to me, I look at BCF as the overarching policy that guides the other advisory committees, but it looks like there was an actual separate policy created for an advisory committee, um, so in twenty twenty-three only, so I'm kind of just, I, I guess we can start there. Um, what do we want to do about that? Because either we have, you know, the potential for up to two members, one to two members, or in this one, you're specifically saying there have to be two members of policy subcommittee from the school committee, um.
Yeah, and I can give you a little bit of history on this one, I'm happy to discuss it too, um, because I always think it's good to evolve and have, have new eyes on things, um. I would, and I honestly will have to go back with, were you here then?
For the creation of this?
Yeah, yeah, there were, so, I, I can go back and look through our notes. When, um, we came onto the school committee, the policy advisory committee was not formed or meeting at that time. And when we were looking through, at, at advisement of something, we needed to create basically something that could establish that committee to then be able to work on the other committees, it was, but I, I'll look through my notes, there was a very specific reason why that additional policy got created.
It wasn't listed as a standing commi, was, it wasn't listed as a standing committee, we needed it to be a standing, I, I, you know, I'm out of turn, let, let me go back and look as well, cause I'm not positive.
We will. Most certainly, um, because my philosophy in life is not to create a new policy, so the fact that we did that, it was definitely for a reason, so we can get you the history on that. Um, so we're, we'll get clarification on that, because I do think, to your point, there could be potential to merge or adjust. Um, as far as the membership on it, we had worked with the administration at the time.
Yeah.
So that would have been twenty twenty-three, when this policy was created, like February of twenty twenty-three?
There's some options there, maybe Frank, maybe, whatever, whomever, we worked with the administration at that.
It was, it was that administration at the time, I, I actually recall, we went out and looked at some different policy subcommittees to see what the general makeup was. There was concern about citizen members versus, you know, depending on the pol, the nature of the policy professionals. I think the general consensus, which was reflected here, was the two school committee people, two administration, and then invitees in, if you're doing the, 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 um, Narcan policy, we have the nurse come in. If we're doing student discipline, maybe we have some students come in and some, but, you know, that, I think that was sort of the, that was the general consensus of what we, of what the, the study showed.
With that said, though, we've evolved our formality of advisory committees since then, and our, I think our, how we outline membership and then also how we outline charge of those, and so, um, I'm a big fan of having community members involved and students involved on, on committees like this. And so, I think at the time, the sup, I, if I remember correctly, I think the superintendent was pretty, had opinions about the smallness of the committee.
I think it was Dr., it was Dr. Palata, if I'm not mistaken.
And so, but we most certainly can open that conversation up, and so, happy to have recommendations from this committee, and then in theory, it would go back to the policy. Ironic, cause it would go back to the policy subcommittee and then go back.
I know, and that to me is just, it's almost like inherent, an inherent issue, um, so.
I think that the goal of that, though, is to not have the full school committee wordsmithing a policy, you know, like, figuring out how to write a sentence, figuring out a thing. So, but the school committee could give direction on, hey, we'd really like to have you look at how we can combine this, we can look, we'd like you to look at the contradiction. We'd like you to think about expanding the membership, and then the existing members can propose something to the school committee, and then the school committee ultimately has the authority to change or amend what they present, is that correct, Andrew?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, our policy subcommittee is purely advisory, I, I, I understand the numbers that you're talking about, but.
Yeah.
Like, I think just about every policy subcommittee, it's gotta come back here, and if a majority shuts down what the policy subcommittee, then it goes back, yeah.
It goes back, or they could amend it here.
Yeah.
Would the policy subcommittee have to say that we could add other people to it?
They, no, 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 so they're advisory only, so they would recommend, right?
Yeah.
And again, the school, because it's starting up here, will take the things, and if Sherry do have anything additional, Rob, myself, or Jen, if anyone has other things that they want, we want the policy advisory committee to look at, we'd send that down, they would wordsmith it and then send it basically back up, and then. And then the school committee ultimately has the authority to make the decisions on if they like or don't like the edits.
And then even at that time, we could add, right? Like, if you didn't like a word that was said, you could say, I proposed to change it.
Yeah, like, you could, today, when we were approving them, you literally could have said, I would like to make a motion to add this sentence. And if you had a second, and then the votes, then that amendment changes on the fly. I think the purpose, though, of the advisory committee is to get into the minutia, so that the school committee doesn't have to literally spend time. And we've done it before, like, tried to wordsmith one sentence, et cetera. So I heard, the, I think I outlined the concerns, but if there's others, we most certainly can note them, and then have, put it on the future policy agenda.
Yeah, I still have others. So, you know, to your point about kicking it back to the policy subcommittee, I'd actually like to see, which I believe is also, it's, well, I know it's also in policy BGA. I'd like to see kind of us following more along what policy is actually supposed to be about, which it says in number two, policy stipulations. It's the responsibility of the superintendent to initiate and recommend new policies and revision of existing policies. And I feel like understandably, we've had turnover in the district over the last few years, and there hadn't been consistent leadership. But now we have that leadership, and I think it's kind of important to be able to give back that charge to the superintendent as it's written here. And in general, that's what school districts do. They allow their superintendent and the administration to initiate and recommend new policies. We, I understand, as the sub, as the school committee, that one of our three major charges is policy. But I also think to some extent that that has gone a little bit awry in the way that policies are being handled. So I would just like to recommend that we relook at the actual charge of the policy subcommittee. And the, I mean, it also says, number five, the superintendent is given the continuing commission of calling to the committee's attention all policies that are out of date or for other reasons appear to need revision. Dr. Duvah, I feel like I'd like, I'd like to see more of your recommendations come board. Or there doesn't, you know, we don't always have to have policy, you know, committee meetings every other week, biweekly. I mean, again, I understand that we went a long time without having a policy subcommittee, and that was one extreme, but we also don't have to go to the opposite extreme, especially with the bandwidth that we're kind of running out of now with all these extra committees. So that's another thing I wanted to talk about. And then just in general, and actually she left, but Pam Panero had, had some excellent ideas. She talked a lot about when we do form policies. They need to be broad principles, as is stated here, in a form that is concise but sufficiently explicit. So nobody's reading eight to 10-page policies. That's procedure, that's protocol, what goes on in the actual school buildings. I think we need to be a lot more succinct when we do write our policies. I understand we're trying to catch everything, but on the other hand, you can't catch everything. You have to actually leave that, a lot of that up to what goes on in the schools. So that's something I'd like to take a look at as well. Or have you all take a look at, and then kick back up to us, please?
Okay, any other thoughts on the policy advisory committee? So we will have BCA and.
BCF?
No.
B, BGA?
Yeah, BG.
There's BGA, BGA one.
And then.
BCF.
Yep.
Kind of go all hand in hand.
Yep, yep. Okay. I think some of them probably are in the queue as well, but we can, already, but we can, this message will come down.
Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else on that one? Okay, moving back to, well, no, so you moved it to the end of the agenda. So we'll do correspondence next, and then we'll go back to the advisory committee reports. So I believe, Rob, you're going to do the correspondence?
Yes. 11:20, Tara Urban, change needs to happen, remove the area journalist chair. Oh, that was, yeah. Well, 11:20, Holly Quinn, correspondence details. 12:01, Samantha Leary, appreciation. 12:04, Matt Kerr, energy and education. 12:05, Phil Pinoir, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. 12:11, Matt McCoy, child and adult care food program. 12:15, Holly Quinn, DEI consultant bid award. 12:16, Karen Martone, question regarding RFP bid award for DEI consultants. 12:16, Alice Adler, DEI support. 12:16, John Gutsier, request to adhere to just cause and contractual obligations. 12:16, Aubrey Kozakowski, a letter in support of DEI bid. 12:16, Amanda Neptune Bridges, I support DEI for NKSD. And 12:16, Dean Meckin, tier, time for everyone.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll go back up to the advisory reports. The first one on the list is the policy advisory. Mr. Case, do you have that one?
Yes. We continued our review of the district transportation policy. We went over the feedback provided by the transportation group on the preliminary draft. Revisions will be made, and an updated version forwarded to the administration for them to share back out with them, as well as with the NKBCA. We'll come back to the policy group again after that for what is expected to be final revisions. We also reviewed the district's current Title I family engagement policy and a proposed new Bikini Bento Homeless Assistance Act policy. The Title I policy is on our agenda this evening with some minor modifications to reflect inclusive language and program chances, but will be sent back to the policy advisory committee after approval. The policy is very heavy on statutory language and not easily digestible for a policy that is intended to engage families. The Office of Family Learning is working on creating more family-friendly language at the individual schools for their handbooks, and the intent will be to build the district policy up from those examples. The Bikini Bento policy will be discussed again at our next meeting, which is scheduled for January 6th at 4:30 p.m.
Thank you. Next, building advisory, Dr. Duvah.
Yeah, so we had our meeting last week. We just provided updates to the committee, where we stand with our meetings with Department of Education, School Building Authority, and also Perkins, which is the architectural firm that's doing the design work for the new Lickford Middle School, put together a facilitated activity for us to really kind of look at, looking at the building, what do we want as far as strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results? And we did that work, and they're putting all of those notes together for us to provide back to us prior to the next meeting.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, moving on to temporary advisory committee on discipline. Mr. Case?
The temporary advisory committee on district discipline met on Thursday, November 21st. The team reviewed our membership, and will be submitting a request probably at our next meeting to have additional members that we are missing now due to resignations from the committee. We also discussed, in looking at cursory view of the discipline daddy, data that we received from the district. And one second, I lost my place. And then we also developed an action plan for next steps and things that we can accomplish and come back to the school committee to, hopefully in February.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Okay, the next one is CLAC. So the CLAC meeting was held at Davisville Academy, and after some brief updates, the district administration, including the principal of DA, and Ms. Dr. Santa, provided a really great professional development opportunity for families that attended. It was, I believe, a similar training to what the staff gets on.
Safety care?
Safety care. And so it was a really great, he, he did a wonderful job. Rachel really helped him, and they provided a really great PD, which is recorded and available to families about how to work with students, de-escalation, things like that. And it was also very good, I think, for the community to see what teachers and staff are receiving. And so that was the majority of the time for that one, as it is about a 45-minute training. But it was a great, I think, PD opportunity that CLAC offered. Okay, can I just get a motion to extend, so we can finish the last two?
I'll make a motion to extend to 10:15.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I like that.
Yeah, I do, too.
You can hang Mr. Sheen.
That was, that was.
It's fine. Don't need that long, I think we can do it faster.
I think we can do it faster.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. School redistricting, okay, technically, it's not policy, but you're welcome to make specific motions. School redistricting, start times and transportation advisory, Dr. Duvah.
We had our first meeting last week as well. It was an intro meeting. We have a good representation of members, parents, from, family members from different schools, staff, as well as administration. We went through short-term and long-term goals, and then we started looking at projections and maps. The first thing that we're focusing on is the redistricting of our elementary schools. And so we looked at where the lines are now, where the lines have been in the past, and starting to just kind of gather that, that data of, of what do we need to do. And we also asked them to really think of, like, what do we need to consider? So we had an activity of them, you know, putting post-its together, put post-its and notes for us. You know, what do things need to consider, what more information do you want? And we'll be meeting again in early January.
Okay. Thank you.